Fun reminder. Really important to bring the mics down and speak into them. Somebody, I can't remember who it was said the other day that they tried to listen to the recording and couldn't hear. Welcome to our pre-meeting for the May tenth. Western Weaver. General meeting, how's that? Hey, so we're gonna, we're gonna just kind of skip down the. The agenda a little bit, Stevenson, you're already at the podium. Um, we kind of had a little bit of, of. Prompt to discussion about. The, uh, Hackland Estates. So maybe we, before we. Make some preconceived. Uh, decisions on that, we probably ought to get a little more information, so. I think one concern there is, is that we're not seeing what the lots look like. Uh, once they're divided up.
Yes, you have that.
Yeah. I apologize for my voice, by the way.
But they're just renamed? Or those are the names?
Yeah, so I'll, let me walk you through this, um, my apologies for my voice, I've got to, well, I'm becoming a man, so.
Oh. Sheesh, that took a while.
Yeah, I know, take, it took a while.
We don't have, we just have a portion.
So you've got the whole thing, I'll show you. So here's what the recorded version.
Right. Yeah, yeah, ours is blown up, so you.
Ours just looks like this, we're really.
You can't tell from that? I'm sorry about that.
That makes some, on that other, on that other one that you had pulled up, that makes some odd shaped lots.
Yeah, it does, yeah, so, and I'll give you a little bit of background, so back in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. Um, this subdivision recorded this way, it was a cluster subdivision. And part of the plan. This is the open space plan. Was to have, uh. Some community gardens, native grass area, forest pasture, a little playground area. Um, there is a, also a detention pond, a trail, some trees. Um, the, the developer never installed that, um, what happened was a couple of years ago, we reached out to him and said, okay. Here's your letter, it's, it's been passed for two years, you need to install it. We got a call from the HOA that said, hang on, we, we actually don't want the opens, we don't want the open space to be this way, we'd rather just own it. Um, and so what they proposed is. Going from this, or you've got six lots. Or you still have six lots in this other one, let me just zoom out a little bit. To six lots. Now you do have a lot eight and nine and ten, it would say are pretty irregular shaped. Um, but they understand and they've put their names on this, each homeowner understands. Um, and, and agree, has agreed to it in some way, and will have to sign this subdivision plat. If they really do want this. Um, but to us, we're saying, look, if you guys want to propose this, that is just fine, get us a plat, we'll send it to the planning commission. If the county commission wants to relinquish the open space easement, they can do that. And. Like, like, I guess it would be a, a win-win at that point, uh, because then, then we're not telling the developer, hey, you need to install these improvements. HOA isn't telling us, hey, we don't, uh, we don't want this open space anymore. Um, so that's, that's what we're looking at today. Now, you're right, there are some odd shaped lots, all of the houses are already built. Um, so there would just be some, I guess, oddly configured backyards.
Then going forward. New general plan. Third acre lots, this is already. So there was already sewer there. Um, what, what happens then? Because right here along twenty-two hundred, I see the potential for building. And this was originally a cluster, and I don't know if that's something that we should be concerned about as we consider this or not. But it's, it's kind of a concern, it's at least a question.
Yep, so we're, we have to take into consideration a few things, one of them is that this is a lot average subdivision. Um, now, what that means is. Each of these lots, uh, had to be. The, the average size of each of those lots. I guess the total, sorry, I can't speak, the average sides, average size of all lots combined has to be at least forty thousand square feet. This does meet that requirement, meets the width requirement as well.
Wait, stop on that width requirement, I'm not seeing it meet that, doesn't it have to have a hundred and fifty feet of road frontage?
Uh, yes, yeah.
And I can't see the measurements, it looks like a hundred and twenty-five.
So you've got, you've got these lots down here that, uh, take up a lot of, there's some frontage on, uh, forty-nine hundred west.
Oh, but it has to be the access frontage. Not the, just random frontage, that has to be the access frontage, I'm pretty sure the code requires that.
Uh, I can look that up if you want.
Okay. I mean, it's creative, I appreciate the creativity.
Yeah, and this is, this is the, the owner's proposal.
Sure.
It's a creative approach.
Well.
But isn't that what we want, where the sewer is, that's where we want higher density, we don't really want a random common space. It's gonna be that way if it's got sewer, the future of that road, if it's got sewer.
So if the, if the zone does change, um, then we're talking about lot average for whatever zone that is, we have to figure out if lot averages. Lot averaging is even allowed in that zone. Um, but yes, they could, they definitely have some potential to create more lots if they did this.
So down here where the depend, the detention pond is in the southwest corner. That does not become a part of anyone's lot, so is that still an HOA or?
It's a part of one eight.
Oh, it is part of it.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, so they, that, that now becomes.
Wow, that owner doesn't get to sell and everyone else gets to.
Right here, right here, right off of, of, what is this, about forty-eight, forty-nine, yeah.
So what's there today? Is somebody farming that?
Yeah.
So, uh, when, when this was okayed, was it okay to the area where, once it's in there, it's in there? Or whatever, I call it forever?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
On the open space.
So it is, but it's, but, um, let me, let me, uh, the staff report, I cite the, the language.
I mean, I'm okay doing away with that thing, but, uh. The thing of it is, is we need to have a procedure for doing that, maybe this is what it is.
It is, yeah, so there's a, there's a procedure to eliminate public easements, and that is done through the county commission, and it's done through ordinance. They have to, um. I, I'd have to look specifically into the state code, it does talk about public utility easements, there has to be, um, a, a public. Purpose, a good public cause in order to eliminate the easement. Um, the, the county commission has to make that finding, I don't know if it's the same for an open space easement. Um, but ultimately, yeah, we will take it to the, to the county commission.
I mean, really, the best use of this is houses. In my mind.
None of them.
I mean, does that make sense?
Um, yeah, I mean, our cluster code would tell you that, you know, um. The best use is houses with agricultural open space.
Right.
Um, but yeah, in the future, if, depending on what the general plan says, maybe, maybe it is the best use is houses.
But at that point, they would have to, I mean, the way we're writing it now, they would have to provide, in order to get density down to a third acre, they would have to provide some common. Amenities. To, to be granted that, but I'm concerned if we divide it up this way before it gets there. To get down to a third acre. That, probably more than just curb and gutter, because that's just standard for.
Looks like Roger gets a new park.
You can't manage the open space, then yeah, you don't need it.
Well, do you have?
It, mostly just, if, if you. I mean, we, I just want to confirm, I'm, I'm pretty certain that street frontage has to be where the access to the house is, that. It isn't, and I think that's probably intent of the rule, and this is skirting that, so.
That would be a good, I think, finding for the planning commission to make.
I can sympathize with the intent, but if we do this here, I mean, this is a precedent for a whole bag of worms that I, I don't know that will be effectively spread along every cluster subdivision.
So now. Do, because of the fact. You know, and, and you showed us. Supposed to be there. Supposed to be an, uh, dedicated to perpetuity for ag, correct? Based on the fact.
That's correct.
Plan, yeah, yeah.
So the. That, so did the developer owns the rest of the parcel? That has not yet been developed?
No, uh, you, you mean the open space parcel?
Not the open space, but it looks like.
The other phasing, there's another phase that the developers.
And the developer does own the other phase.
Yes, that hasn't been developed.
But this particular section is dedicated to the homeowners association owned by these six.
Yep. Uh, right now, it, it hasn't been sent, it hasn't been given over to the HOA yet. Yep.
Okay. How, how does the developer, what's, have you heard from the developer?
Um, yeah, I have, what, what, uh. You wondering, like, what their thoughts are on this whole thing?
Yeah, exactly.
They're, they want the HOA to be happy, they, uh, Craig actually submitted this application, the owner, the, the lot.
The developer.
Developers have been to the application.
No more Nike for you.
I know.
And to be a park, I'd rather see that dedicated to the county, that seems more. The county wants it, to the Parks District, that seems more equitable than the developer.
That's a good idea.
They brought a plan in that says they're gonna put this playground in, they're gonna put this, those couple amenities in, the developer was.
They were ever going to be public access, I think they were, oh, they were gonna be turned over to an HOA, so they would have been owned by the homeowners, not a public amenity, but a private amenity. So it's the, the private owner, homeowners that I think are at a loss right here. What they were prob, promised, you know?
I agree, and that's why I think the developer should have to still put that funding, or that money towards it, to put those amenities in.
Oh, right, either for.
Whether it goes to be a park or.
The county or anyone, okay, yeah, I see.
This is the conundrum that we've kind of alluded to in the general plan discussion. That, here we are, not even through the general plan.
Right, here it is.
Right here. So. So we really don't have the, the new. Give us any guidance yet. Bit of discussion.
Yeah. See if I could answer Commissioner Wickens' question. About lot width here. Yeah, lot width, minimum eighty feet, uh, the average. Area and width of all lots to comply with the zone standards, um, when we. Sorry, this is saying, you could, you can go down to twenty, as long as your average ends up being what the zone requires, right? Their average has to be a hundred and fifteen. I believe they do, yeah, and we can, we.
Yeah.
So, um, I think you bring up a good point, so when we go to the, our definition specifically of lot line front, that's where it says just generally measured width. And so I, I, I'm guessing they still could figure out a way to, um. To, to change some lot lines with the developer if you were to table it, um, to come back before you and address that, that specific issue.
Ah, tear down houses.
You just get, you just purchase more width, right, more.
Right here, it says lot line, the front, right? So ingress, ingress and egress is, so if your driveways are coming out to the front, how does that? Yeah, so, so now are we gonna have, we're gonna have draw, driveways coming in from twenty-two hundred?
I guess, I guess we leave that, that, that up to the, the owners to figure out.
You would have to, if you're gonna meet the code.
Yeah.
But that's the problem with double frontage.
Well, so we, we do allow, we do allow corner lots to have, we, we, we wouldn't necessarily consider that double frontage. We call double frontage when you've got front and you're, you have access in your front yard and your backyard, technically, I guess this would be double front.
Tens, double frontage, lot nine, or all the way through, they ain't gonna be double.
Right, but it, but if they decided to make their access off lot seven. I think the problem solved right there.
Seven, show me your other map again, please, please.
Which map?
The proposed.
This is it.
No, we're seeing the code.
Oh. Sorry.
You're seeing what we want to see. So you've got. Three lots that fall within that double frontage.
They could, I guess theoretically. Bringing up, bringing up the general plans, they could just, they could wait until the general plan's adopted and, uh. Figure it out then too, and then they, they wouldn't even have to do one energy.
Well, but then they would have to.
Better planned at that point too.
I don't.
I think they could change their, the location of their front lot line, depending on where they gain access, and I think they could meet the code. But under what's proposed and with existing driveways, as you pointed out, they'd have to ver, they'd have, we have to measure and, and verify, but yeah, you're right, it looks like. It might, it might be under that one fifty average.
Okay.
Talk about other stuff?
Yeah, anything else? I'd just like to see a decent picture of it.
That would be helpful.
Show us a decent, show us a picture of the next one, please, Steve, because this is all we got in our. Felix is sorry, oh yeah, it is Felix. Yeah, see, I like that. It hits the canal. Yeah. Oh, puts it near this one, near four thousand. Bends up here. Oh yeah, it comes down, yeah, it's on the west side. And the bends up here quite a bit, or this diagonal. Little bit, it's not a long ways west.
This is probably for. Rent, uh, on the, on the water, to your improvement. Item three always says centrally, we will not take ownership responsibility for the condition of ownership and maintenance of both cemetery and sewer lines, does that mean before it's adopted? Oh, they're saying the county's taking care of it, okay. So that's what it's referring to, okay, I was like, is that, that just struck me funny, I was like, well, the, the owners don't usually do in that. Okay. Okay, but the county is going to, that's what it means when it's going to be, so it'll be annexed to them for, um, water treatment, but not for the actual parts. Alright, that's all.
Pretty standard. One thing to note, uh. Just looking at lot five. Can see it's just under the forty thousand square feet, so. They could do it a couple, they could fix this a couple ways, they could just move that lot line a little bit. So I imagine that's what they'll do, or they could go with lot average, which I don't think that's necessary. Just leave that one there.
Any questions?
Yeah, I think it, it's probably good to make that comment, just to say, you know. Maybe as a condition.
Anything else? Anything else in general? Well, if we think of something, we'll let you know. Yeah. Scott's been getting away with sitting there. Yeah. He needs a bigger computer.
On, uh, on Jacqueline. Where there was a, where it's a, where it's a subdivision amendment, kind of treated like a final. And where you'd be making a recommendation. Um, so I guess. Right, right now, I'm kind of measuring lot widths for you, see what we find, I'd maybe recommend if we don't find it meets appropriate width. To not necessarily recommend denial, because then it just goes to the county commission, but I recommend to table it until we can verify widths.
Mission. What was the, what was the verdict? I must have fell asleep, on the double, on the double access to those lots, how did we determine that that's, that those don't become double access? Refresh my. Memory.
Corner lots can have two.
Two, two corner lots, and then we have like three other lots.
But the, the rule about, um. Determining. Your width come, is based off of your front lot line, so where your access is made. So I think if the planning commission found tonight that there wasn't enough width, I'm guessing one of these owners on the corner would say, fine. I'll build a driveway and I'll access from the other street, and that would, um. Bump their average up to quite a bit, but I'm gonna figure out exactly, um, what it is if we're just going with. Um, access, uh, front lot line.
Rough day at the office.
We had a meeting with the health department and then the septic systems, it was more up and down.
What's the good news?
Um. We're trying to look at the possibility of reusing the. Affluent, um, but DEQ has some issues with it, so we're trying to work with DEQ to look at some things, so.
Use it as a secondary source?
Possibly, but we'd have to amend certain things legislatively wise, so. So. We're setting me, meeting with the EQ in the next little bit, so.
And Charlie's up working feverishly on the general plan. There's Les Olson when you need him. All right. Think we'll go ahead and start our meeting, welcome to the Western Weaver County Planning Meeting, uh, for May tenth, please stand for the pledge. Thank you, um, roll call, uh. Commissioner Quance is excused. And, uh. We'll go to the minutes, so, um, Commissioner Wickern, I think you had a question on the, on the minutes.
Yes, on April twelfth minute, um. Trying to see which page, page. Yes, on April twelfth minute, I'm trying to see which page, page two. The, um, the recommendations for the, the school, number one, it says a pedestrian pathway access. Um, but it says shown as a public pathway prior to written approval, and I don't remember specifying it being a public pathway, and I don't know if we can even do a public pathway through school property.
We could do a public pathway through there, but it would probably be better, and we can go back and look at that, listen to the recording, but it'd probably be better if it wasn't a public pathway, um, through there. So the school district is maintaining that.
Okay, so I think it'd be good to look at that and see if that was specified, because I don't, I don't remember specifying that, but we'd have to look at the, I think just the pathway was specified, so.
Any, any concerns or questions on the April sixth minutes?
I didn't see any chair.
So, Director, can we approve the April sixth minutes where they're both combined, or do we have to wait for another meeting to approve both together?
You could approve them either separate or combined.
Tonight, okay, all right, so we'll approve, uh, the April sixth minutes, and then I think we'll wait for the explanation on the April twelfth minutes.
Make that motion, Chair, okay, have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much, move on to the next item, consent items. Two point one, DR twenty twenty-two oh two, consideration in action on a design review amendment for machinery and warehouse additions approximately one hundred ten thousand square feet to the Kimberly-Clark site located at twenty-ten North Runway Boulevard, Mr. Burton. It's consent. Consent item, sorry, uh, consent item, so I'll ask for motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent items.
A motion, second?
Second.
Have motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, administrative items, item three point one, LBJ zero two, twenty-two, twenty-two, two. Consideration in action on a request for final plat approval of Jacqueline Estates Phase One, amended subdivision. Now it's up to Mr. Burton.
There you go, good evening, Commissioners. Let's see here, this subdivision is located at approximately forty-nine hundred west and twenty-two hundred south, Western Weaver. This is a, an amended cluster subdivision. We had an original, the original subdivision was recorded in twenty sixteen, and all of the homes have been built in the subdivision, there's six lots and six homes. Over the past few years, the county has, has met with the developer and trying to get them to, to finalize the installation of the open space improvements, which included um, like a playground and some horse pasture area, some community gardens, um, some trails, trees. And recently, the, um, the owners in this subdivision have reached out to have planning, and they've also reached out to the, the, uh, original developer um, and requested to actually own the open space, which would mean that, um, the county commission would need to relinquish the open space easement that was put on that open space. We think that can be done by taking it to the county commission, the, uh, eliminating the easement if they decide to do that. But it also means that they have to amend their subdivision plat. So we've got for you is a request for final approval of Jacqueline Estates Cluster Subdivision Phase One, First Amendment. I'll show you the screen here. So you've got what they're proposing to be a lot averaged subdivision, is one way to allow them to be able to take over the open space. The lot areas and lot widths would have to average out to be forty thousand square feet and a hundred and fifty feet. Now, during the pre-meeting, there is a question of width being brought up, um, because of the width of where you gain access. Um, I, I was trying to remote into my office computer to be able to measure it out exactly. Um, I think what had happened is there was a previous iteration of this that actually showed, um, lot eleven owning all the way up over here. Which currently, which is what they do, I believe, which is what they do, let me show you. No, that is part of, um, what will be a future phase. And so they, um, let's see here. Yeah, they're basically requesting, uh, to be approved as a lot average subdivision, and they may have to come back and verify with us that they do have the right frontages, or they may need to change the location of a, of a driveway to show that they do meet that requirement. And if they can do that, um, it could move forward to the county commission, another option that they could have would be, um, to wait, so one option is to, to seek approval tonight, another option of this is to wait and come back with a, a different iteration. Uh, another option is they could see what the future general plan says and, and, and maybe lay out some, lay out a little bit better of a configuration that way. But that's what is before you, and we're not where it's, uh, just amending some lot lines, all the homes are built, we're not looking at any water or sewer or irrigation requirements tonight, so. Yeah.
Yeah, so in relation to secondary water. Those, when the secondary water approved this, they looked at the lot sizes on that lot average, not at all, now you're making all those lot sizes bigger, so I think that the secondary water does need to review this. I, I get it on water, I'm sure that doesn't change, but as far as the secondary side, it does, so.
Hold on, we'll, we'll give you an opportunity, thank you. Um, I, I've got a question, Stephen, on lots eleven and twelve, are they, are they not part of these, this proposal?
They are.
Okay, so where, where is their portions of this?
Right, right, that's what it looks like right now, well, there, there were lots five and six. So I think they are changing just this version.
His concern is looking, I think, we need to be for sure it doesn't meet that code with that average from fifty foot front and across there, because feel the way it looks right now, and not seeing for sure numbers on there.
To meet code, that needs to be a hundred and fifty feet of average frontage from the point of access for the lots.
Not from the point of access, but from the front property line.
But it doesn't.
It says from.
Ingress and egress.
Ingress and egress, so it does need to be wherever you access the property is where they measure that.
The front lot line is where we measure which.
Yes, and the front lot line is defined as where the ingress and egress.
Yeah, I thought you were saying that, that they had to go from like their driveway, I, I, maybe, I get too technical.
Where we go in and out to access a lot is where that measurement needs to be taken to meet code.
Yeah. I was gonna say the owners are here as well, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that, it looked like someone wanted to make a comment, so, um, anything else for staff at, at this time? All right, then we'll, uh, hear for them, anyone who wants to get up and speak with us that has a direct relationship to it, please. So if you'd like to, come on up to the podium, give us your name and address for the record.
Right here.
Yep.
All right, I'm new to this game. Uh, I'm Dallas Buck, I live at forty-eight fifty-five Jacqueline Park Lane, we're lot, we're lot four, I don't know what we are lot. I'm also the, the HOA president, because it is an HOA. As far as the water goes, we actually have been in touch with upper irrigation, with the shares that were allotted, we are okay with the shares that were allotted for that. Just FYI, we actually didn't have enough shares to actually water that open space, so. That's was, um, so just FYI there, uh, as far as a hundred and fifty foot, yeah, we can work with that, that little area was pre-done by the developer as phase two. As shrubs and stuff, and so to make it so it wasn't a burden on that other homeowner, that's why we left that as common area, but. I think the biggest thing for us on this one is that, like Steve said, the developer hasn't held up his, him to the bargain on this at all, he's let it go. At first, the first few years, it was just cattail, or not even cattails, but like it's low enough for the weed, belt heads and foxtails, there you go. That, that, that was all was behind us, then he started farming it. Um, but behind the two smaller lots that are up on there, it's been just weeds, it's been hard for him to, I mean, he doesn't maintain it as well. We actually had to get to a point to where we've had to call the county to say, hey, you need to do this as a nuisance. So that's just kind of where we were, Steve, when we contacted Steve about develop, the development of that open space, he mentioned that this was an option for us to be able to do that, and be able to also alleviate the developer in the financial burden that he wasn't even able to pay for it anyway, we even with the escrow money, so. That's just kind of where we're at and why this proposal came to be.
Yeah. So. Any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, as the HOA president, have you been collecting dues to, that the developer has been putting in escrow for the property or for the common area?
The dues have been collected, um, but those dues aren't for the open space, as far as the development of that, those were dues that I believe the county required him to hold twenty-five thousand in escrow for those. Somewhere around that to develop that open space, which isn't, which especially now with inflation, everything is completely impossible to do those improvements with the allotted money in escrow by the county, and the HOA dues shouldn't technically be used for that, because it was part of the development, not part of, for maintaining.
For maintaining, but that's, I mean, so you've, you guys have collected money that's meant for maintenance of that property.
Right.
But not for development of the property. And right now, um, does HOA own the property?
As of a couple of weeks ago, it was finally turned over to the HOA.
So you do have.
Up, up until, up until then, it was still part of CJ Holmes Development, the developer.
Okay.
Because of the bylaws and everything, he was, should, basically should have been developed, then turned over. But when we started this negotiations with the land, the developer, that's where the progress kind of.
So the, so the HOA and the associated homeowners are now own the property?
I guess technically. Well, uh, and that, and that's where too, to make it fair to the developer, I guess, is we're vacating some of that which was on the plat, we're giving some of that three acres back to the developer, because if you look on the original plat behind, um.
Okay.
So lots eleven and twelve are getting bigger in trade for that.
Right, because of the way that it was done, for, the fir, the, the phases on the original plat, all the land behind lots, uh, eleven and twelve there were actually part of phase two, they would, they weren't going to be part of our lots. And so with, with the lack of maintenance of those, that was where we also were, that allocated us to give back some of that phase one open space, and then the developer was willing to trade that for the space around the other homes to let their lots increase as well in size for the lot average subdivision, is what it's called, I guess.
Yeah. Thank you, other owners.
Okay, anyone else?
Did this have a second phase? It, and what would that do to the second phase?
Hey, that's a Steve question.
Yeah.
That's okay, uh, there, there was a second phase that was, that got a, like a preliminary approval, but it expired, so it wouldn't do anything to this division.
Anything else for the applicant?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the applicants would like to speak? Okay. All right, thank you very much, Commissioners, any other questions or concerns?
I think the biggest concern, just making sure it meets that frontage part of the code, I mean, I, I really have a hard time doing this, just because I think, you know, you bought a, into a subdivision that's supposed to have a playground and some grass and some open space. I have a hard time basically saying the developer, he's getting off scot-free kind of in my eyes, which uh, that really, I mean, if they said they were gonna do it, we approved it based on those amenities being installed, now they're not being installed, I have a hard time with that, so, um, but my basis on this one is gonna be, I, I recommend we table this, just that we can get that lot frontage, make sure they all do average a hundred and fifty feet and do meet the code.
Commissioners, anyone else?
Well, under the circumstances, I think that this may be the best use of. I'm okay with that.
All right, any other discussion? I'll ask for a motion.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we table this item and come back with the front, come back with the, the average frontage across the subdivision, so that it meets the intent of the lot average code, which they're moving this into.
Have a motion, ask for a second.
A second.
Have a motion in a second. Commissioner McCormick?
Aye.
Commissioner Wickern?
Aye.
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Andriotti?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Motion passes for tabling that item for more information. Thank you very much. Item number three point two, LVC zero four, twenty twenty-two, consideration in action on a request for preliminary approval of Cameron Point subdivision, six lots.
Yes, good evening Commissioners. We, we have prepared a, a couple of slides to, uh, to help familiarize yourselves with this subdivision plan they have. A six lot subdivision that each lot ranges from roughly one acre lots, which fits in well with the current zoning of A one. Here's the, the development plan, it's a preliminary plan. They've shown the desired area for development and the lots, we'll zoom in there. And six lots, and there, what they'll plan on doing is stubbing that right of way to the south end, right at the edge of the Wilson Irrigation Canal. The, there'll be a temporary turnaround. The utilities will run and connect in with the adjacent development called Cameron Village Cluster Subdivision. So you'll have Taylor West Weaver Water, you'll have upper irrigation, and you'll also have Central Weaver Sewer District Service there. Here's some of the things we looked at with the subdivision preliminary review. The site development standards for the A one zone. And the subdivision, preliminary subdivision plat requirements, as well as to make sure they have those will serve letters in place to serve all these, these lots for, for residential development. And we have a staff recommendation of preliminary approval based on these two conditions. Can see that we're looking for, before we come back for final approval from the planning commission, we want to see that they have the capacity assessment from upper and Taylor West Weaver. Kind of concludes what I had, any questions? I'd be happy to answer those, we, I was looking for the developer, I don't think he's here today.
I just got one for Felix, like we talked about in that pre-meeting, you're okay if we add a condition on there that they've got to make lot five be in compliance prior to getting final approval?
That's good fun, I like that, yeah, that's.
I think it's a minor, I think, you know, like you said, we, they.
I think it's a minor. I think, you know, like you said, they can move that lot. Lot six is a little over. Five's, what's that, three hundred and eighty-two square feet under? So they got plenty that they can make it work, so. Here is. An addition to that condition.
Commissioners, anything else? More questions for staff? Go ahead and I'll ask for a motion.
Jerry, I'll make a motion that we. Recommend preliminary approval of Cameron Point subdivision. With the conditions of Taylor West River Water District shall provide a capacity assessment letter. Before final recommendation from the planning commission. Upper irrigation shall provide a capacity assessment letter before final recommendation from the planning commission. The square footage on lot five be brought up to a minimum of the forty thousand square feet. Prior to getting final approval from the planning commission. My following findings, the following findings are based off the staff recommendations and the Cameron Point. Subdivision conforms with the West Central General Plan. The proposal is not detrimental to public health, safety and welfare. The proposal will not deteriorate the environment in. General area to negatively impact surrounding properties.
All right, have a motion. Any discussion? Have a motion in a second. Commissioner McCormick.
Hi.
Commissioner Wicker.
Hi.
Commissioner Edwards.
Hi.
Commissioner Andriotti. Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, three point two L B C. Zero four twenty twenty-two. Consideration in action on a request for preliminary, oh, we already. Or legislative item. I'm going backwards. It's been a rough week. Legislative item four point one Z T A twenty twenty-two oh one, discussion in action on a county initiated zoning text amendment to regulations. In manufacturing zones M V one, M one, M two and M three regarding garbage dumps, landfills, incinerators. Transfer stations, automobile wrecking or junkyards and similar uses. Hey, Mr. Perks.
Thank you commissioners. I'm gonna share my screen here, but. This, this particular text amendment is before you, in the existing manufacturing areas, some of these. Heavy intensity uses are listed as conditional uses in the C three zone, sorry, the M three zone. Manufacturing, so the, the far west portions of the county. There was some concern leaving those in the code as conditional uses where we've been doing a lot of planning, a lot of. Lot of long range visioning for that area of the county, but a lot of us are, are now. Termining it as the mega site and, you know, trying to use that area for some, some future development. So in, in the proposal here, and I'm gonna connect it and share my screen. In the proposal, those particular uses that were read out just a minute ago, such as. Garbage dumps, landfills, incinerators, transfer stations, automobile wrecking or junkyards. Are being changed from conditionally permitted to permitted. Pull that up here. Now, there are a couple of nuances. I'd like to discuss this. This came down from the commission office as. A request we take a look at this and make recommendation back to them, but with also some concern. That we don't want those particular uses impeding, you know, what the vision is for the area. Trying to get this into launch. Should be popping up on your screen here. So this, this exhibit in the staff report, exhibit A shows this proposed text amendment. And it's truncated, so we've cut out all the sections of the manufacturing ordinance just to facilitate your, your reading of it, but. The crux of the proposal is in the land use table. For transportation uses, so in the transportation table, we have the waste transfer indoor and outdoor listed. And then also in the waste disposal and recycling table where we. Are looking at the automobile, automobile wrecking or junkyard and then also the dump. Land use. So what you'll see here is the transfer station we're showing and not permitted across the board. The, the nuance here, I think we need to talk about a little bit, is about this indoor transfer station. Maybe there is a need for a facility such as this. And at some point, maybe not currently, we have an existing transfer station, seems to be working as, as intended. But maybe further down the line, maybe we reopen the book and we have this as a use several years in the future when that. Far western portion of the county starts developing, we have a lot of manufacturing uses and we, we have some more demand where we need some more transfer station. Capacity, but for now, we're showing it as, as not permitted across the board. In this proposal, I've consolidated the dump use, as you see, it's all crossed out here with solid waste dump use. Between the two, the solid dump, that solid waste. Talked about just a dump for solid waste, but in the dump above had been a little bit more specific to. Animal byproducts and plant herbivore for dead animals made sense, I think, to go ahead and combine those two and just cause solid waste dump, but then take. The, the language specific to dump and add it in, so it's a consolidation of the two, but. Irregardless, we, we still have it as listed as not permitted. So it's, it's a fairly simple proposal. We're just striking these items as, as permitted or conditionally permitted uses out, out in the manufacturing areas. And then in the special regulation section here, we've also stricken the special regulation that was applicable to automobile wrecking or junkyard. As it is no longer a use in the table. So that's, that's, that's it. Everything else kind of shuffles down and the numbering going, you know, through the ordinance. You have any questions about what is in the red line or what is being proposed on this proposal?
Questions, commissioners?
This is only. Trash, so you could, so a company, like a garbage service company could have buildings out in this area, but. Just wouldn't be able to dump trash there, correct?
That's right. Yeah, so we could have like a, like a storage yard for, for garbage trucks, you know, to, to have them stored overnight or what have you. We're just simply saying that actual dumping area.
And this doesn't affect existing operations. This is for future operations.
It would affect them if they wanted to expand considerably beyond their current approvals, so they wouldn't have, they would be grandfathered at this point. And if they wanted to expand beyond what their current approvals allow for, then we would need to look at it again and open.
Conditional at that point.
No, so it would be not permitted. And we would have to, you know, maybe go back and say, let's maybe open up the book because there is needed capacity here. When they need to change that in the future. We're kind of closing the book on those uses and saying they're not permitted. In existence would be grandfathered, but only up to where they've been permitted.
Okay.
Is there any currently outside of the county, Jews?
Out, outside of the.
Outside of, of what the county has.
Not that I'm aware of. I don't think there's any private facilities. Are there any junkyards that? I don't think we do.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? Any discussion?
Commissioners, I will just point out, this has been noticed as a public hearing item. Would like recommendation if you're comfortable making one, so we can move this to the county commissioners.
Okay, and in that case, I will ask for motion to open a public hearing. So moved second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are now in public hearing. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Please come forward and state your name and address.
Al Sanders, thirty-eight eighty-nine west, twenty-nine hundred south. That's another question, so. There's, on the garbage company, there's a lot of rumors that other transfer stations are coming in and this and that, so it's pretty well blocked that, correct? I know that there's a lot of issues with one on thirty-third right now, or they're getting less and less of what we can take in. There's basically a hundred percent. Recycling, but there's rumors that other companies are going to open up transfer stations and this and that. I've been told they're going to, but I get the impression now that you're not letting somebody here compete with Weaver County because that would be ridiculous, I think. But I shouldn't say that because competition is good, but you, you know what I mean? I don't. Really want to see another transfer station a mile from the one that we already have here, if that makes sense. So my. Listen to that correct, that they would not let another solid waste transfer station in here then. So basically, you couldn't have what Weaver County has, excuse me, and then take it to like. White sides or whatever that one is out west of Tree Mountain or one that's twill or whatever, basically. We'll use the one that we have now. It's the one we got now since it worked perfect.
Yeah, yeah, and it's, and it's county managed, so there's an exemption for that. But this, this is private. This is for anyone private that wants to come in and either expand what they have, which it sounds like there isn't any. None that I'm aware of, or anyone that's there that wants to expand, they're kind of now locked into where they, where they are going forward.
Okay, yeah, and to be straightforward, honestly, we've, I've been approached by a company who says they're going to build one in Weaver County. And they want me to bring my trash. And they said that Weaver County can't flow control like Davis County did. So would you support us? And it's like, wait a minute here, I deal with both, both of the cities. I'm going to support whatever the city wants. And every city I deal with wants to stay with Weaver County. So I didn't know whether there's going to be a conflict there or not, but it sounds like the answer to my question, it sounds like there isn't to be a private individual coming in and open a solid waste. Another transfer station.
Right. Yeah, yeah, if this goes through, we're, we're just a recommending body. Then the commission will take that up and they'll complete the process.
But they initiated.
They did.
Yeah, so it'll.
Process.
Yeah, so.
All right, well, thank you. You answered my questions. Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll ask for motion to close public hearing. So moved second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now out of public meeting. Commissioners, any discussion on this item?
No, sure.
Hey, I'll ask for a motion. Don't everybody volunteer?
I'll make a motion. To pass a positive recommendation regarding the proposed text amendments, the county commission. Should the county commission being comfortable with proposal, it should be approved based on the following findings. The changes are supported, supported by the two thousand and three West Central Weaver General Plan. Changes are supported by the current draft of the soon to be adopted twenty twenty-two Western Weaver Futures General Plan. Changes are necessary to address growing needs of manufacturing and adjacent residential uses looking to locate in the western. Portions of Weaver County and the changes will enhance the general health and welfare of county residents.
Have a motion, I'll ask for a second.
A second.
Motion in a second. Commissioner Andriotti. Commissioner Edwards.
Hi.
Commissioner McCormick.
Hi.
Commissioner Wicker.
Hi.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you. Now we move on to our next item. And I'll ask if anyone in the public would like to make a comment on anything that was not on our agenda tonight. Sure. You're public.
So just a comment, and I know this isn't the forum to solve the problem.
Name and address if you would like.
Yeah, Brad Blanche, seven thirty-six south, forty-seven hundred west, West Weaver. I think as all of you know, I have a couple of subdivisions that are working their way through final approval, but they have final approval. One of the larger ones is getting ready to move forward to actually the commission and recording in the plat. I just wanted to make an observation when it comes to a secondary water in the area. I know that there's an ordinance that was passed last summer that grants authority to. A secondary water district, same with the culinary water district. However, I think this issues can come up repeatedly in the future as the area grows. And that is the current secondary water provider in the area doesn't have the capacity to serve the area, in my view. Seconded, more importantly, there are going to be a lot of people like myself that have significant surface rights off of the river. And deep well permits. Where they won't really have the ability to go with the secondary water provider that wants to be in the area. So in my particular situation, that's forced a requirement to create my own secondary water company. I'm partnering with the home builder that I'm working with to actually get this over the finish line. And so. My subdivisions, and I don't know if this will affect others as well, my approval dates predate. That ordinance change that was approved. I, and so we're doing the best we can to actually get this subdivision again over the finish line. And it feels like that there's going to be some conflict that continues to come up. With regards to using surface rights in my own secondary water system. As well as who has jurisdictional authority to manage and have. Oversight of the secondary water plan. I fully recognize, and it may be dusting off cobwebs. The developments that I'm working on are fairly unique, and so the conversation you had earlier about what happens when open space doesn't get taken care of. That's particularly applicable to my development as well, just because I have so much. Open space on the, on one development, there's going to be eighty acres of permanent open space that has to be maintained by my company in perpetuity. That will also be true of the secondary water system. So it's an observation that. For me, I own the water privately and the developer does not. It's to be putting in the infrastructure. And so I, I can't partner with the district that wants to be in the area because I don't have a way to, to dedicate shares to them first. And then secondarily, I, because my dates predate the ordinance that was passed last year. I have worked closely with the planning commission as well as the engineering division to make sure. That the plan that we've submitted is a functional plan. It's a strange scenario, I know, but I'm, I'm just kind of letting you know my perspective that there are a lot of people in my area. That are going to be in the exact same situation as the area grows, where I have significant excess water capacity. Beyond what I need for the development and have worked closely with the Division of Water Rights to coordinate that. And the rights that I have are senior rights, not junior rights. And so this is an observation, it feels like there's a bit of conflict there that maybe the commission should look further into.
Thank you. Anyone else? On to remarks from planning commissioners. Commissioners, any comments? Planning director report.
Zooming right through this.
Charlie, you're, I hope you're ready. You're in the bullpen. Liam.
No comment.
Hey. We were counting on you. Okay, I'll ask for motion to adjourned work session. So moved second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.
That's easier in there for us, I feel.
It is. Okay.
It's definitely. Big bag tonight. Which is good. Back by the restroom.
Okay. Is there a means to that? Is there like west, east or north, south? Or is there any? Because I think how this is written now is going to encourage or not encourage. What that growth is, what that what that commercial space has a tension for.
Right.
So, you know, that's.
Are you asking the chicken and egg question?
I guess, you know, yeah, I guess I am.
Uh, the easy answer is it's in this case, it's going to be the egg, the houses. Yeah. Now, unless you're bringing in a commercial anchor. Now, if you have an anchor, a whether it's a well, let's just say. But let's just compare it to a to a shopping mall. You want that Macy's to come in because if you can get Macy's, then you've got to draw. And that draw will bring other people to stand shop like Sarah mentioned, start shopping some of those other areas.
Yeah.
And so there is that component of it. Uh, but regardless, unless you have people who have the ability to walk there from their residences. It's still going to be all automobile oriented and making it dependent on that. You'll you'll see in the future and we see in in a whole bunch of different urbanizing areas, August City, Salt Lake City and whatnot. A hundred years from now out here, uh, it it's not going to be drive there and stop. It's going to be drive right past. Um, because there'll be other really cool areas. It's going to be the next latest and greatest, you know, it's the. It's all like it's the gateway versus.
City pretty.
City pretty, right? And what are they doing at the gateway to keep the gateway alive?
Everything they can.
So that people can just go right downstairs and shopping.
Also considered when you talk about the circle of commercial that and and you talk about walking distance. People are not going to walk across.
That's true.
We've only got one side of the road, but there is no way you can cross that street now.
Yep.
Walking. Uh, you put all those homes out there and all that. Uh, commercial further out.
Yeah.
Don't don't think they're going to be able to to.
It's the. So as we look at 12th Street, um, is this most recent draft? No, but it is the draft that I want you to be on. Okay, so will you pull, will you pull up the land use map from the website?
Yeah.
Big thanks to Scott for driving. I just decided it's too hard to have the conversation and drive at the same time. I'll leave somebody out. We're gonna just call him Mayhem. So as we look at 12th Street, what we'll find is along the 12th Street corridor, we are looking at the vehicle oriented. So we're kind of looking at what we see on 12th and Washington right at those intersections. But beyond those intersections and behind those intersections, we're talking about that darker red, which is the mixed use.
Hold it off of 12th, 12th Street, so we get that.
Right.
Okay.
Now, part of that idea was maybe you will never warm up to this idea of create of allowing communities to create a main street on their facilities. Um, I mean, 24th is about as good as you can get, and it's still not the main street that that August City wants. They, I mean, they're promoting the heck out of 25th Street because 20, or not, sorry, 24th. Uh, Washington is about as main as you can get with a U dot road. Um, and you still see it's a high capacity transportation corridor, not a shop and walk economic output corridor like the 25th Street corridors. So the idea, the idea would be to to keep it vehicle oriented for the sake of the high capacity transportation corridor, probably a five lane at some point in time. Um, but you that's kind of changed the their tone a little bit. They are actually working with our transportation consultant, township and range, as well as a few other jurisdictions, while such regional council to develop main street standards for you dot corridors. Which frankly, we're going to need in a few other places in the oven valley to to make some of those communities work. So I don't know that they'll ever apply it to 12th Street or Highway 39. I I kind of doubt it. And beyond that, because of what's going on way out west of eighty three hundred west, you probably still want that to be a transportation, primarily a transportation corridor. Um, as opposed to drive to get out and walk. But right adjacent to it, just just a not even a quarter of a block away. You've got tremendous opportunity to have walkable pedestrian. And that 12th Street kind of becomes the southern edge of that walkway pedestrian because any sudden that you go to the railroad. If you look at the active transportation maps and the. Active transportation and the parks and recreation maps, we are showing pedestrian bridges crossing the railroad track and crossing 12th Street at some point. So essentially connecting both sides that you could get some of the higher density or or mixed use residential that's south of the tracks or being plants out the tracks. Across the the tracks and across 12th Street. Again, I imagine those being either, well, I imagine them being pedestrian bridges. You couldn't get a tunnel under there, it's too much water. But pedestrian bridges over the tracks and over the. 12th Street.
So I opened up, uh, you on Highlands.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I didn't, we didn't order them in any particular order. Okay. So as we started doing this last week was we just started to go, we were going through the goals. And if there's any need to expand on many of those goals with going through the principles and action items, you guys would just stop and tell me, right? You guys cool doing that or would you rather do a little bit more in depth reading?
Thank you. Just go over mine. We've all pretty well read it.
Okay. Okay, good. All right, let's go to land use goal three. Uh, business, tech and industry as part of the county's economic, I'm sorry, page 20, which I'll get there. Perfect. As part of the county's economic growth strategy, the county will pursue options to bring basic sector jobs to the area in appropriate locations. That's a, that's a important phrase there inappropriate locations. We are counting will strive to attract a diverse diversity of basic sector jobs, including tech innovation jobs, industrial and manufacturing jobs. And just to make sure, uh, basic sector jobs versus service sector jobs, just make sure it's clear for for everyone. Basic sector jobs are jobs that primarily produce something that's exported from that local microclimate or network. So, um, you've got the Hillary space is a prime example. I mean, their product is defense and that's primarily outside of this area. Um, you've got Kimberly Clark, that product is primarily bigger than we were calling. Whereas McDonald's, that is limited to what's within a certain region of it. And so that's McDonald's will be your service, the hotel would be your service industry, basic sector will be stuff that is primarily exported from your community. And so tech jobs, um, industrial manufacturing and so forth. Okay, and then if you were to go through the principles there, we're talking about citing them, you know, eighty three hundred west and and further. Uh, for most of that. Tech park, however, if you think about a tech park, they're pretty good neighbors for residential, for commercial, for a whole host of things. It uses tech park as a buffer between incompatible uses and and you've got a pretty good buffer right there. Uh, quiet, it's cars, people coming and going, but it's usually the professional setting. And then you school four on page 21 agriculture, agricultural issues should be located in appropriate areas that are harmonious with adjacent land uses. Okay. Then this is where we talk a lot about maybe a purchase of development or transferable development overlays on incentivizing act to exist. I told you guys in last meeting that I will be adding most of the shape file for the ag protection areas back to the map. And specifying that some of these apply directly to those those areas that we will strive to work with the landowners to keep those areas open. Okay, page 22. Land use school five open spaces. Um, this was a lot longer than I cut and pasted most of it into the parking rack section. So, um, so both I provide for healthy. Sorry, provide for the health, well being and community character by fostering the creation of present, the creation of. Boy, did I write that the creation of preservation, conservation and appropriate maintenance of valuable open spaces. Creation of, and there we go, missing again. And preservation, conservation and appropriate maintenance of valuable open spaces. Okay. And then last but not least, mining, so when you spill six mining at the bottom of the 22. Um, see, uh, the resource management plan in chapter eight. Well, you had some mighty principles there. Okay. Now we have a map that I still haven't adjusted, but imagine for yourselves that 2550 and fifty one hundred west. There is a mixed use commercial area there with, you know, buffered with a mixed use residential around it. And then we still have a little bit of a question mark on what we'll do with tiny, and I'll be bringing back some hopefully solutions. And then next page over page 24, you went to Highlands. I think the adjustments from a few meetings ago, Sarah, that you mentioned was at the roundabout. We was a little too dense, let's just stick with the, the, what do we call the, the?
The third acre.
Medium sized residential lots, which is the third acre.
Yeah.
Okay. Ten acre. Hey, demographics and housing. I'm going to go through this briefly with you guys. This is part of our existing plan, but like I mentioned before, was this front is working on some revisions to this with with updated information. So. Just kind of blasting through, looking at the graphs as far as population growth goes and five year projections. We're looking at county population versus Western Weaver population. We could see a huge difference in that trajectory. And we anticipate that continuing, that's where the green, green spaces easier to do out there. Um, interesting little tidbit household size. Uh, Western Weaver average household sizes two point nine two. The average owner, so the household size of people who own their homes, two point nine, which I'm surprised to see that lower. And then the Western Weaver average for renters, one point five seven. With the county average being three point five, so like slightly less people or household.
It's the only way you can afford it.
That's, that's true.
So keep in mind, that's a linear projection having pretty hard down because there's a pretty sharp decline between 16 and 17. So that's kind of put that linear projection down where it's pretty quick. But I think that the takeaway from this is our household sizes are shrinking a bit because we've got a lot of older generation. Uh, dual income, no kid type of the deal out that West.
Perfect. Uh, racial composition that doesn't come as any surprise to me. I don't know if it comes as any surprise to anybody else, page 28. And one of the reasons why that's important is because when we're looking at government services, we want to make sure that we are representative and giving appropriate services to all. Age distribution, it's really interesting graph right there. Uh, sixty nine point three one percent eighty and over.
That goes back to the household size shrinking because you got a lot of, you know, older couples and fewer younger generations that are in those households.
And also keep in mind, these were twenty seventeen numbers. Now we've got some newer subdivision, yeah, pre pandemic, we probably got some younger families out there.
This is just Western Weaver?
And just Western Weaver, huh? Uh, page 29. So housing supply comparing housing supply to population growth and housing units. So you could see looking at the year 2017, we've got your total population was eight thousand two hundred sixty four. That was. With two thousand seven hundred sixty eight dwellings.
It does not.
This was just Western.
Just the census blocks out west.
That's me to know, so it'd be different.
Yeah, it would be. And the updated version will include. Yes.
But I think it's it's separate than I would not push the data in one time.
No.
Yeah. You went to Highlands and yeah, because you won't get clean data.
Okay, perfect, moving to page thirty. Um, households and owner occupied housing units. Uh, and so what we're looking at is primarily two person households. But we do have that broken out by.
So this is owner occupied housing units.
Yeah. And the next one down is renter occupied housing units. Kind of see the changes now. Now, when you look at renter, the the denominator on that fraction is so low that any change is going to lead to a rapid difference. So, um, I would take the, uh. The red spike out to twenty twenty four with a little bit of grain of salt. We'll, we'll see with the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two data, whether or not we even stay close to that trajectory.
Yeah, it ran this loop, it looks like one family, five of them.
Yeah.
That's right.
I I think it's interesting to see if you look at those two graphs side by side, the renter. Looking at it from a big picture, the renter seems to be a little more of a sharp. Linear projection as compared to the owner occupied. So I know there's a lot of, you know, issues with the owner occupied, or sorry, the, um, renter occupied data. But just as a, as a snapshot, there's it would appear that more people are moving into renter occupied versus owner occupied.
Yeah.
Custom housing.
Right.
That's a good way to look at it. And then, um, looking at the table on page thirty one. Uh, so this is kind of, you know, the meat and potatoes of how do we determine what is affordable when it comes to affordable housing, right? So in Utah median market value in twenty thirteen, two hundred twelve thousand, two hundred twenty seventeen, two hundred thirty eight. Look at the incorporated area, uh, you're jumping up more than fifty thousand. Now, that's an odd number, three, three hundred, two thousand odd today. Because the county wide average is or median is four hundred thousand dollars. Yeah. So that one. Uh, still not, yeah. Yes, for the house, right.
Because there's a little place down the road beneath. If if you sneeze, you'll blow right through the house, six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Yeah, you know, so if that's. Yeah, it's got an.
Yeah. Yeah, we're the numbers we were looking at for a thousand, was that for August city or was that for? Uh, a few, uh. A few weeks ago or a couple of months ago.
Housing values.
The three, three hundred and ninety five thousand or whatever it was.
I think it was Argent, and I think there's been a forty percent increase.
In August, okay. I was trying to see if we can draw a comparable here, but you're right, out in the uncorporated areas of Western Weaver, it's going to be more than the four hundred guys.
Yeah, easily.
Then we think on everything is just Western Weaver.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, well, you're, you mean in terms of median home values or income? Yep, so yeah, put from the page, page thirty two. Yep. So as you look at the map, figure nine, yeah, I mean, you can see where, you know, any inner city August is. You can see the values there. I mean, you, well, you can't see the values, but you can see that there's supposed to be a value there. To match really small. Get your magnifying glass out.
So real quick, Mr. Whitten, just to answer your question, if you, if you see this exhibit, everything's shown in blue with a little bit. Um, uh, overlaying in West Haven and other municipalities, this is the data set from the census. So everything up in the Yona Highlands was left out.
Oh, on screen, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, so it's a.
We had a little bit of overlap into Plain City and into West Haven.
Okay.
Yeah, everything in this dotted line, that's where all this data set came from.
At some point in time, maybe.
Yeah, I think also as an important caveat, this was twenty seventeen ACS American Community Survey, so it was probably collected in twenty sixteen. It's, it's getting dated.
It's a, it's a five year estimate, so it would be collected from twenty thirteen to twenty seventeen and then, yeah, extrapolated from that.
Exactly.
So as you look at figure nine, look up in the United Islands, though. Uh, now you could see where highway eighty nine goes down and it kind of divides the community. Um, so you've got a little bit of difference, uh. Where there's a, a yellow blob there, it looks like.
Trying to zoom in.
A handful of buildings there between, or excuse me, excuse me, income there between sixty one and seventy three thousand. You look at Wes, you you can't find anything in the uncorporated area at, uh, under a hundred thousand.
What microscope are you looking?
I'm looking at this.
I tried to zoom on the screen too, so I'll look up the might. Trying to give a little magnifying glass.
Anyway, so that's how that that data is being shown. So look in the Ogden Valley and Ogden Valley likes to kind of tap themselves as the, uh, the community that pays all, all of the taxes and supplements on everyone else, everywhere else.
People go on.
That's right. Yeah, you look at it compared to out west, there's a comparative, uh, comparatively similar population. comparatively similar population, but in Western Weaver, we see higher salaries. So when, so the reason why this is important, obviously, is because we need to identify how many families are in Western Weaver under the the median household income. How many are there and how many homes do we have? And what is the difference between that? If we don't have enough homes to provide for those people, then we need to figure out ways to to make more. We didn't take that exact direction when we created this plan. Because we didn't feel like it was proportionate. It's already too unattainable. And so we looked at kind of from an attainability perspective as opposed to a moderate income housing perspective. You have to be an Ogden in Weaver County in order to find affordable housing. And the question is, is that fair to Ogden City? Now, I would argue that it's fair for them to have a higher proportion of lower income people and moderate income people. Because they've got services and the facilities and all that. But I wouldn't say it's fair for them to take all of the moderate income housing. Every community should be trying to pull its weight. And so we looked at proportionate share of the counties housing as opposed to a proportionate share of the communities in doing that. So when we came up with the goals and outcomes of this plan, we said, all right, what is the county looking at in this difference? How much of the need does the county have countywide? Where are they located? And then what is our ratio of that, basically, based on how many households we have or how many? Yeah. So that that kind of gives us a little bit more of obligation if we're looking at from that perspective to provide for moderate income housing.
You have to be able to provide enough tax income because bringing in that kind of population also brings the needs of amenities for this.
Services.
And services that cost money, you can't you know, so Ogden Valley pays about sixty percent of the stuff they incorporate. You could, you you can't put in those populations, you can't bring in that population split the budget. Can you remember?
Yep, you can't, yep, not not without the retail tax base or the commercial tax.
That's why I know each here is similar population. Similar incomes, but the difference, they have more commercial.
They do.
But but building off that a little bit, these nodes as we go out, there have been required service, people to provide, there will be jobs for service.
Yes, and transit.
And transit.
To get access to other locations.
And so with that, you know, I mean, I think that that's where it's important to make sure that there's there's adequate housing in those areas and and no more than the fair share, like I keep determined. But but that's where it makes sense.
Yeah.
They're centralized. Those services can be there, you know, and or at least seemingly they can be.
Yeah.
And and it it creates kind of a little bit of a an area for that to be provided where it's not. And I don't mean this in a bad way, but it's mentioned here burdensome to the community. So.
Yeah, yeah, burdensome is the right, I think the housing burden or the state code is written in a way, the word burden is actually, I believe, in there. So it's good where he is.
Well, and it's important to note that all of our public, a lot of our public service jobs, you know, our teachers, our firefighters, our policemen, they're they're not in the deep green.
No.
And if we want to have the they're probably going to want to live where they work and if there's a good job where they live or they got jobs. So.
And this this brings up a strong compelling case for good transportation corridors. So we're having the same kind of conversation in the Ogden Valley. I think I told you guys last week, if I didn't, I'm into state codes changed, we have to have an implementable moderate income house. We can't just have a plan that says this is what we're going to aspire to do. We've got to put together the list of things that we are going to do and on an annual basis, report what our progress is on that. Otherwise, we are at risk for losing funding for transportation borders. Which is the opposite of what we want to do if we're going to be creating this kind of.
Does that go for all the small cities?
It's also, it's all the cities under, over a certain population. I can't remember what that population is. And that population changed with this last legislation as well to be smaller population. So even some of the smaller communities that didn't have to do it before are going to do it. But I don't think it's all of them. Most of the ones that we have in Weaver County, yes, I think maybe Huntsville and Yount City might be the exception.
Well, now it comes back to that chicken and egg. How much develop? How fast, how far?
Yeah, exactly.
There's also, there's no bus system whatsoever out there, not not one single bus.
Yeah.
Goes to any of those communities, any.
Well, there isn't enough population out there.
That is the chicken.
We cannot survive.
All it is.
Not a business.
So that's why, where does it make sense to start?
Right. Yeah, and really comes down to where's that housing density? So it's it's the it's the egg. And then you put the chicken in there.
Oh, you know, I on the state setting goals like that, you know. I've been on this rodeo quite a while and I'm going to tell you, that's the only way you're going to change anything. It's true, it's setup, I think, seeing these kind of things that have a negative effect if you don't. Because the thing of it is, everybody wants their kids to live around here. The fact of the matter is we're not living here.
Yeah.
Yeah, unless you have a piece of ground to give them.
And even at that. Even at that. So, you know, I'm I'm on board with with this, because the thing of it is, is what makes communities really good communities in the end is going to be the diversity, not only in salaries, but also culture.
Yes.
Because we should be striving to make sure that when we do these areas that we have a way to have a sense of community, the parks is one way to do it.
That's right. There's no faster way to create a blighted community than to have a a default area for underserved.
Correct.
And it's really, really easy if you're coming, maybe you're coming from out of country or from out of culture into an area. It's easy to try and congregate in areas where people who are similar to you are. And so you get in Salt Lake City, you get the Glenwood area, you get the Rose Park area. Glenwood is primarily, I believe, primarily Hispanic and Rose Park is primarily, or at least has a high proportion of the population as Polynesian I wonder. And it just so happened that that is where somebody moved there and then somebody moved there and then somebody, because that that was something similar. The challenge behind that is you don't get societal integration. And so the the better you can kind of spread that out, it's it's kind of spreading the the load, I would say, of societal integration. And that's not to debase or undermine anyone's specific culture. Because that culture is important. But to provide for everyone fairly, you want to have some level of integration there.
Well, in full.
That way, I lived in, yeah, different communities, never being the main. Everyone was looking around me and they they just in clusters and it and there's there was not a culture in San Jose. I mean, other than engineer, just not. People that stuck to these cultural clusters, rented houses in the middle of these funny clusters.
But you can't, you can't call sell a third acre lot throughout.
I agree.
How do you, how do you provide those opportunities? Not that I'm against, I'm awful at the data, but you're, when you're doing these outings, you'll never bring in you know, what you're talking about, a third acre, if a third acre is a minimum, you don't do that. And so I mean, it's a hard balance for you guys, I was figuring out that, I'm just saying that it's a wonderful idea. But then you get all these, you'll push it back saying, I know some people, I don't mean to point to you, but the.
You need to say you people when you.
Yeah, yeah, you need to do that, push it back as well. We don't want, we don't want growth, we want our kids going out here. You know, we want, we want our kids out here, but yeah, not the kids, we want our kids.
I've tried to write that law and I just, I don't have to do that.
You can't do that. So the people that are pushing that towards the the density, the same people that are also kind of their kids going to put it in the land. And and so it's it's a double, it's sort of like, it's a, because you have wider population, you have wider density, so you can you have amenities, what are you need, because you're going to have to have a limited community. Girls can want, even if you grow at one acre increments, the cost of staying in that population grows with that.
Yep.
With the roads and all the, and you can only verify house stops alone, what paid for.
Yeah, I agree.
And no business will come of money.
I know this, no, but you can't say it.
You won't have a restaurant, you won't have a grocery store.
It's a it's a transportation oriented. It's your idea to stay at home.
That's right. So in thinking about that land use map, there's just a lot of yellow up there and I've I've got a little bit of anxiety about the amount of yellows up there, the amount of third acres that we're looking at. I I would feel a lot more comfortable if that map showed a little bit more of the diversity, however. Moving from one acre, which is not advisable to third acre, that's far more advisable. You're still going to get a lot of suburban communities and maybe that's okay. And because we don't have the unique flavor of these small areas, we don't necessarily know where we might want to see maybe locally concentrated higher density, so it's not all third acre spread out.
And we have to make sure that that higher density flows with the infrastructure.
Yes.
And so by concentrating it, we can look at extending it, but let's let's make sure we first fill in what we've got infrastructure for before we get excited about.
Yes, and so what I think the right thing to do is right along those lines. It's it's take what we have here, knowing that in five years from now or ten years from now, we have to come back and look at it. We have to come back and say, all right, third acre really doesn't make sense everywhere. How have we progressed in the last ten years? And how has our transportation, how's our infrastructure? What changes have been made and maybe, you know, maybe there's a a little island of Andriotti family out there somewhere where we want to do Little Andriotti. Is the town, you know, or just a little commercial. Okay, so I'm actually going to make a note of that to.
Make it smaller if we can.
Well, I'm thinking revisit, let's make a note to revisit in five, ten years from now.
Another another idea, we've got third acre, this is median lot and all the yellow that's everywhere, but everything has to go through a rezoning process to even become this yellow that it's shown on the map. And through that rezoning process, there is a legislative decision where we can look to say, well, maybe we want something that's more master planned. And maybe we want to have clustered style, but the base density stays at a third.
Yeah.
So we have that let's say ability to say, no, it does make sense to have some clustering or some, you know, variety of housing. It doesn't have to just be third acre, it could be lot averaging, it could be something else or clustered style, we could have some smaller.
As Western Weaver.
Don't say clusters.
Yeah. Well, there's already a roadmap for that around here because you drive through some of these communities around us, there's patio home, they're not even a fourth of an acre.
Yeah.
And that's, that's going to be the future out here someday.
Yeah.
And the thing of it is, is that that's only natural because when I get too old to go up and down little steps, you guys are tired of hearing, but I want to stay out there, so that's the kind of place I'm going to be looking for.
Tired of hearing you go up and down the stairs.
My needs already. Well, I think around these nodes is a good place to kind of expand that a little bit because because if you are in in that part of your life, not not just economic, so we're not just talking about moderately priced housing. But you're also talking about people who are at that stage in their life where they want to be able, hey, maybe driving that car is not comfortable anymore, maybe they don't want to drive it anymore. But they still need to get groceries, they still need, you know, to go get a cup of coffee or whatever it is they want, or a hot dog or whatever. They should be within some sort of walking distance to be able to accomplish that.
I think fifteen thousand foot below overlooks a population who wants houses in Utah. It's because we graduate over nine thousand kids every year in the county. And in five years from now, they're all buyers. There's nothing that they can afford.
No, no.
That's exactly right.
And yeah.
And if we hold those bigger lots, they're going to have to move north.
Yep.
South's all populated.
I agree.
I got news for you, north, it doesn't get any better.
Well, further, I mean, across the border.
But that already is the case.
That's true. Because these, these go up to two thousand seventeen, especially for large lots. Between two thousand seventeen and twenty two. I bet those lines are like this.
Yes, and inflation is crazy, yeah, back to.
So what we're what we're adjusting for, we're already, we're there five years behind the curve.
Yeah, well, and Scott keeps on reminding us as we're looking at revising this, that COVID threw everything out.
Well, we shouldn't wait five years to revise it.
Well, what I'm saying is you got to get the numbers and the census of twenty twenty is going to be ruined before we even get the chance to use that number, yeah. So I I think we're going to be we just, we have to look at twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two data, I think, because twenty twenty census is just.
We just received the current conditions analysis from the University of Utah Housing in Weaver County as a whole. And there they have used the only data set available to them, which was the census. All that data was collected pre pandemic. So those conditions are not going to even be telling of what we are at today. We're going to have to put some assumptions in there, like a thirty percent increase in housing into those assumptions and it's just six million rooms, there's a scenario, existing conditions. We don't even have data to show us what.
And I'm, I'm not really promoting the small lot, it's the only way. But there are a lot of young families who would like a patio home also. It's not just the people with bad.
Yeah.
I I think we joked around that we always lived in the newlywed, in the nearly dead community. But I tell you, it blends really well and it's quite fun because we're the, we have young kids, it's nice, it's small, it's nice to walk everywhere with your stroller. Now, I think, I think it's really fun, like Sugar House, adorable.
Yeah, I agree, diversity is the key. Right? Okay. So I'm going to add a little bit extra text just to make sure it's clear that this is the beginning of the emergence of a community. And and yes, definitely agriculture, yes, definitely residential, yes, definitely third acre. But also patio homes and other kind of communities as time goes on, so working.
Only make those lots, the longer agriculture can stay.
I agree, it's true too.
Yeah.
I agree.
That's true too. Because then will you do all in farming? All the money we give, we put right back in the.
Okay. Sorry. No, no, you're good. Let's turn our attention to page thirty three. Maximum monthly housing burden, this is where we use the word burden here. This is basically lenders won't lend more than twenty eight percent of your monthly income for for your payment. That's just best management practices and even then, I don't know how people survive on thirty percent of their income going to one thousand. That's a challenge.
They're paid Jake going higher.
Yeah, that's true. And we've got renters who are definitely going higher. We've got renters who are fifty and sixty percent of their incomes paying for rent. Well, and that was in twenty seventeen, so now it's going to be even worse. So you can see what these numbers are, hundred percent, AMI is, oh, I guess that's about the area median income. So hundred percent is sixty two thousand and that's for the county. Eighty percent median income is forty nine thousand, so that's the number from twenty seventeen, that's the number we would be targeting. Now, that number today is closer to, I think, fifty two or fifty three thousand. But someone who earns fifty three thousand a year needs to be able to afford in this community. And you could see what that, at a, what do we do? I think we did a four percent interest rate. That's one thousand one hundred fifty eight dollars is is about thirty percent of their monthly income. And that gives them a purchase power of two hundred and forty two thousand five hundred dollar home, which you're not going to find anywhere in Western Weaver.
And and this is Weaver County as a whole.
This is Weaver County as a whole, and that's the state obligation is we have to address the county wide median household income.
You know, the state's making laws that they can't back up. Because we're already fighting for sharing.
Yep, yes, so the four percent was actually a number that Scott and I use from twenty seventeen, right, five years ago.
What's going up there, it's getting closer to.
Yeah, five, six percent, we're going to be a lot higher, so the number.
It's got to go to where inflation will be same place Carter was, seventy eight.
I hope that one.
Hopefully not.
What did my parent, I think my parents' first mortgage was eighteen percent interest. Of course, the house was thirty thousand dollars. How would that be? You know, that's true, that's true. The ratio was better, so we're looking at the difference in housing costs now versus the different housing costs at that time and you're actually a little bit higher now, but wages. The wages just aren't.
Yeah, yeah. They can't, they can't come up that fast.
No.
He wouldn't be able to afford anything then.
Augen City just gave their employees, I think it was eleven or twelve percent cost of living increase, uh, Davis County just did the same thing, I think Weaver County is gonna be looking very closely at doing that here pretty soon. Cause we're gonna be, Weaver County's gonna be losing employees.
So the planning commission gets more money.
You guys get at least.
Will be double.
At least twelve percent.
But the key is, we still get the same amount of.
We're gonna give you twelve percent more paperwork. Okay, next page, uh, just telling stories with graphs here, we've got renter um, occupied income growth. So this is the amount of uh, income that we can expect to see of the renters, so uh, as you look, let's see. We've got Weaver County renter occupied and then West Central Weaver renter occupied is the difference in those colors there. And you could see that West Central uh, folks who are renters. Their salaries are increasing at a much rapid, mu- much more rapid rate than countywide, and that makes sense because. That, so was the real estate, I'd be interested to see what. The twenty twenty-two data actually shows, but you can see that projection. Uh, after twenty twenty-four, if we stay on a linear line. Uh, would put the is it average, is it median uh? Renter income at uh, seventy-eight thousand. But some of these numbers for renters don't that provide, just quite been, just challenging, yes, is the word to use. Okay, cost growth for rent, you could see here, we've got Weaver County in blue, West Central Weaver in red. Um, in twenty seventeen, it's hard to tell exactly what that difference is, but. You could see how the um, the difference in. The. Cost to rent is is increasing.
Problem is, we've already exceeded the twenty twenty-four number.
Yes, yeah, significantly, I mean. Uh, you're probably looking at, what are you looking at, twenty-two to twenty-five hundred a month in in rent of a lot of these homes.
Well, and and the and the, to add on to that. We surpassed that probably two years ago.
Yep.
So it didn't even, it, because you know, you can say you're halfway through twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-two, excuse me. So from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-two, five years, give or take, well, you met that back here in twenty twenty.
Yep, so this really, uh, when we did a linear, put a linear projection on this, we probably should have put a parabolic uh, projection where it shoots up quite a bit faster. So, yeah.
This is, this is pre-pandemic, to my day, no idea about all this inflation and all these.
You should have predicted that stuff. Yeah, planner not a. Make a T-shirt with that on it. Okay, and then median property value versus Weaver County, so the area's median property value uh, versus Weaver County. Um, AMI growth.
So this is trying to tell you is that your. Was your income wasn't keeping up with the property value.
Yeah, increases.
So the orange, the orange line shows your income growth. Oh, no, AMI, so the gray line on the bottom is your income growth is only six point two eight percent. But then your two colored lines are your um. Property value growth, so income just isn't keeping up with property value. As a positive.
Uh, the, so the the next paragraph below that uh. Graph is esti- estimated supply and need, and so that's just another part of the state code requirement, we need to know. What is it that we have, or is it that we need to have to support? The uh, population that may live in that area. Okay. Alright, so modern income housing, let's uh, go to page thirty-eight and let's go through housing bullets. Okay, you can stop me if you need extra discussion or clarification on anything. Uh, goal one, the goal group county is to support affordable homeownership and rental housing opportunities in West Central Weaver and maintain the quality of existing housing stock. The quality is important, um, it's kind of a double edged sword as well, I mean, you let it deteriorate and the rents go down, right? But so does everything else uh, in that respect, so. Um, you don't want to see a deteriorating uh, community. Okay, goal two, a goal of Weaver County is to provide housing choices and neighborhoods that will allow residents with a variety of incomes and at different stages of life to live in Western Weaver. So we're looking at the the twelfth street corridor, those nodes. And and trying to make sure we've got some variety, at least in those locations, and then a small area plan as time goes on, we'll rotate every year. Hopefully take a closer look at some of the other areas. Okay, uh, page thirty-nine, goal three, maintain the quality of existing single family housing stock and affordability, or sorry, and affordable. Homeownership opportunities. And maintain the quality, so I'm gonna change that just a little bit, cause I don't think it's telling the true story. Goal four, maintain the quality of existing multifamily housing stock and affordable housing opportunities, story. We can't maintain affordability if uh, we don't have it. Uh, goal five, provide housing choices in neighborhoods that will allow residents to live in the same neighborhood for their entire life cycle. Goal six, update and or put in place the necessary tools enabling the community to track the number one mix of existing housing stock, two. Condition of existing housing stock, three, delivery of existing housing uh, education made available to the public. And for the availability of local resources, enabling single and multifamily rehabilitation and or new construction, which facilitates access and affordability for special needs populations. Now, I don't anticipate huge shifts in those goals. One more goal on the back. Seek to monitor and market data and barriers at a time for all housing sectors. To assure prioritization and and implementation and keeping with modern income housing plan compliance every two years, and that's now every one year. They could change. So I don't anticipate huge shifts from these goals, if anything, we might see a few more goals coming in online with the new numbers that we're looking at. Um, but uh. I think we'll see most of these goals prevail in the plan, any concerns or questions about any of them? Okay, transportation, now this is one that I think we're gonna come back and revisit again, in fact. Maybe for the sake of time, let's skip this one until I can get a little bit more. Detail in there, I don't think there's anything um, necessarily wrong with what's in here per se, I just don't think it's complete. We've got a few more things. To add into it, so let's skip it and go straight to parks and recreation. Page fifty-six. So some of the things that you probably noticed is, um, I think the word city showed up a few times, um, I went through and I searched all all of those words and changed it to cam. And my apologies, uh, we had our consultant write the narrative of of this and. I'm sure some of this uh. Is familiar to him for from other projects he's worked on, but. Um, one of the things that we emphasize is the envelope necklace, in fact, maybe the most important thing we emphasize the envelope necklace, and I meant to insert an image. It's a little bit in the um, the narrative that our consultant wrote that uh, I think could probably be pared down a bit. For example, doing a level of service analysis and and need, I don't know if we need to have that in the plan. That's required if we're gonna create an impact fee regardless, and so the park district will have to do uh, impact fee facilities analysis, sorry, impact fee analysis and impact fee facilities plan. Spelling it out isn't necessarily a bad thing, I just. Sometimes you get extra length in there and you lose people's attention. Might pair some of that back just a little bit. Um, will you pull up the parks and rec map? One of the things you'll notice on Parks and Rec map is. I haven't gone through and identified where park should be except for along that M O necklace, and I only identify the areas that are in. So kind of low hanging fruit, we don't want to see development there, it makes a lot of sense for it to just be either. Natural park area or even a green park area, if it floods, it floods, and you know, we come back at the end of the flood and. Still have the park, not a not a big deal. Beyond that, what you'll see a lot of are trailheads adjacent to streets. And trips. And just a ton of, and we're not anticipating huge trailheads in these locations, everywhere you see the icon for a trailhead are hard to see, which is zooming in on maybe. Um, we're not talking about a big parking trailhead, we're just talking about maybe a a off-street parking for a handful of cars. You put enough of those in just diverse locations, um, you'll have, you know, somebody can pass by one and say, oop, no. Too many cars there, we'll go right around the corner to the next one over, to the park right there. So that's the intention with that, and not all those will come online all at once, obviously, it's just gonna be bits and pieces at a time. And we know where we want them, and so we ask the developer, when they install their development next door, to build them. Build the parking area, if we, if the park district wants to maintain bathrooms and stuff like that at these trailheads, then. We will have the developer go to bathrooms and uh, trash facilities and all that kind of stuff, and then we go to the park to operate and maintain these facilities. So some of these are just gonna be parking areas, uh, others will be areas with restaurants and drink pounds and stuff like that. Alright, so let's go through the uh, goals of Parks and Rec. And you guys, again, stop me if you need some more clarification. Alright. Goal one. Uh, there is a lot in goal one, okay. Provide for the physical, mental and emotional needs of the community by creating physical park locations. In which existing and future residents may recreate, exercise, blow off steam, play quietly, contemplate and connect with and enjoy nature. I think I put blow off steam just to see how many people would smile.
Well, if if I'm there relaxing, I don't want somebody blowing off steam.
Well, hopefully there's enough space, right, that's the park analysis on the biggest page, you gotta figure out how many acres we need per person. It's play, comma, quietly contemplate, but you could say, play quietly. Uh, so I'll pare that down just a little. It's not necessary. I don't think it's record, I don't think it's recreation, exercise, I think it's work. I agree. I agree with that, um. Yeah, so I can revise this uh. The the idea behind it obviously is just, there is an emotional uh, and psychological uh. Aspect of having green spaces, and you don't have a healthy community unless you've got districts. And that's, that's been documented across the nation, if not across the world. Okay. There's a ton of principles and implementation uh, strategies here. Okay, goal two, on page sixty-two. Provide additional support for parks and recreation, goal one, by providing recreational trails and pathways that interconnect neighborhoods and provide off-street access to parks, schools and other community destinations. Other community destinations, AKA churchhouses, AKA rec centers, AKA the village locations. Okay, goal three, ensure the residents of Western Weaver have equitable access to parks. Um, so making sure that. We at least have trails that lead people somewhere within a reasonable distance. And don't create these, um, I'm gonna call it a desert where you don't have. Decent and reasonable access.
Or like the rail trail.
You mean where it's like, long and linear and.
Yeah, there's no water, no.
Oh, I see, yeah, yes, I agree with you.
There's not a ton of access either.
No, there's not, uh, you gotta find little main roads to get to it, uh, all those subdivisions back onto it in a few locations going down through. Roy or um, even in Davis County. You can see the backyards of a lot of houses, but you can't get to any of those neighborhoods, that means those neighborhoods can't get to the rail trail.
Are you talking about the one out north?
Well, it it's that, those are the Roy's same way, saying one out north. Fall down out there.
You say off-street access, we had off-street parking, because in Augen City, I can't tell you how many parks don't even have a parking lot. And it just fills up the entire.
Whole block around it.
Yeah, the whole block around it, I I'm shocked. Oh, we just park here, okay.
Park a couple blocks down the street.
And provide off-street, so the intention of off-street access is that you don't have to use the street to get there. But you're saying for parking.
Yeah, like here off-street, all like parking, please don't park in the street.
No, that's, that's great. James got.
Charlie, have you got a question?
Yeah, we do.
I'm just curious if you've had time to meet with Roger and the parks committee. How they feel generally about this section. It's learned how you sit up on there.
Yeah, so um, so far from, uh, we ha- I have met with them. I haven't met with them since this section has been produced, but I know that Roger uh, has read this through the section. As far as it pertains to the park district itself, the county won't be able to apply these regulations to the district. And so we know that, and I asked Roger last time that we met uh, here uh, to go through it and just let me know what things he thinks are unattainable for the park district. Uh, so things that the county would have to pick up. But these won't be able to be applied to the park district, they'll have to essentially create their own plan unless they adopt these in life themselves. But that being said, um, everything that was in here from before Roger was was re-born.
Feels like very harmony and scope.
Yes, there may be some need to uh, put some additional language in here, for example, I don't know that we've got a. Roger wanted to define a neighborhood park and then a regional park, I don't know if we have language for that, yeah, in here. Did you? There was a description of it, I don't know there's an implementation.
Oh, yeah, there's a description, neighborhood park, maybe park, regional park, private park.
Private park in a different location, pocket park, which uh, we'll, I'll try and rectify the difference between.
I don't know, so that's not what you're looking for.
So it says what they are, but now we need someone to say what we're gonna do about it. It's a good question, um, Jane, thank you. And the the acreages that Roger's looking at, it's a, it's a lofty goal, it's it's a lot of acreage, but I think it's great. You look at that amount of park acreage for its community and. Lot of lot of maintenance, but beyond that, uh. It's really good, uh, you you're not gonna see a huge challenge with levels of services in its park areas if you continue to look at that. Okay. Where was I? Goal three, nope, or goal four, so page sixty-three. Continue to maintain a high standard of maintenance for Western Weaver parks in the future, I'm gonna change the word continue. We'll just say maintain a high standard.
You gotta have some domain name.
Yeah.
Re-part.
Some people might think that's very well maintained.
It is.
I haven't, I haven't actually been out there, so. Is it the only work? And then goal five. Increase the amount and variety of natural open space in Western Weaver. It's supposed to say west. Uh, goal six, promote water conservation and similar practices to help ensure the uh, the Western Weaver Parks and Recreation System is sustainable and resilient. Sustainable and resilient, those are plan words. Uh, completed, so uh, we had the national conference last week and that's all we heard was. And uh, that's all we heard was sustainability, resiliency, inclusivity. Equity, uh, yeah.
Attainability.
Everybody's business card.
It's the uh, the acronyms that come after the, the.
Is this plan going to uh? Be on plane or not going back to where we were with water use?
What do you mean?
Well, you know, for, for years we had plenty of water. As one of the highest per capita uses of water. In the nation, and actually um. What we have now is probably the highest per capita use of dust. And so I, you know, just because we have wet years, I don't see that we need to have all this green. I, I think that we need to move away from that. Especially if we have a, an adequate trail and park system. Which leads to recreation, which leads to inside families. Those are the things we want.
We actually, we've, we've covered that a, a, a variety of different ways, but we also cover it in, in the next couple paragraphs down. But what, what we need to do is help create a community that expects to see park space that is brown. And I don't mean brown grass, I mean, if you look at the state of Utah in August from the air, it's brown. Uh, I mean, you'll have native vegetation that will be yellow and, and uh. I mean. I don't know how Western Weaver was before we plowed everything. But if you go to the benches, just on the shoreline trail, you've got little cactuses in a few places, you've got. So native vegetation is something that we should be seeking to pursue. Down along the, the Weaver River, I'm sure there's less cactuses and a few more uh water oriented plants, but. That's the kind of trail system and, and park system, I think we should help the community expect to see in the future. You could still have a well-maintained wild or natural, natural, uh, natural plant or. Naturally, naturally growing or occurring parts. Um, but you can't play soccer on that, right? And so if your soccer field is green. But you don't have a sea agreement, still enough area for people to go out and play on, they all broke a prison year or whatever. Um, but the rest of it that is just a mowing nightmare, you, you might as well have something that's uh less water intensive.
It doesn't take us long to find a good example, Phoenix does it, I mean, they've got community parks that are green, they do have, you know, fields and, you know, green grass and you can go play at the park. But they also have, you know, green uh corridors leading to the park from one neighborhood to the next. And then your yard is not especially green, you've got a lot of landscaping, but it's all very water-wise, drip irrigated, you know, green.
I was just looking on uh. I think it was a link from a KSL uh news article to incentives for replacing landscaping. And um, they have, I don't know who they're working with, but it's, there's a company out there that has. Free downloadable landscaping plans that you can do for your yard. That gives you plant species, locations, spacing, how to drip irrigate them, all kinds of stuff. Uh, it's not gonna be customized to your specific yard, but at least it gives you ideas of how to surround your home with. Uh, a lot of zero scapeing and a little bit of, of turf grass. Saint Joe, I was just at that Saint Jose the other day, they've installed a uh football slot, uh soccer field, it's all. Very green, but you get up next to it, you don't realize that that's not well-maintained and manicured lawn, that is astroturf.
Although we were school district, high school, tougher.
Oh, really?
The football fields, the soccer fields, no, it is kind of more important to get that high quality turf for soccer than football.
Interesting. So I mean, that may not be the worst idea in the world to look at for some of these green spaces, if you're just gonna go out and fly a kite, maybe it's astroturf. Um, as opposed to a big patch of grass, I'm thinking of the Big V Park over about a month of the. This is a lot of grass every time you see that.
Specifically have Roger and the park that reveal about the river corridor and the trail system there. Think up in detail on that or?
No, there wasn't a lot of discussion about that. Roger supports the idea, I don't know if he supports the idea of operating and maintaining all that. Um, and trails is a totally different subject because. Their park district, they haven't so far said that we're gonna take on trails. It would be nice to see that happen as well, and so when I, when we look at these trailheads, it would, it would be great to see that be incorporated into the park. But I don't know if that's something the park district. Is gonna be willing to do though, so we'll have to kind of keep an eye on that.
Jurisdictions and challenge, but concept, I'm talking concept, at least to start.
Yes.
Support or preserve.
As far as I could tell, the concept is very well supported, and I've been very surprised to see people who live along the river, some of them. Coming to terms with the idea of what a great asset that can be. Especially when they know that we're not coming to take, or just when you're ready to develop, that's gonna be uh something we're gonna ask for. There, there are still people who are very interested, that's right. That's right.
That's good, but personally. But there is the harmony.
Good, and uh, something to be said for the community uh as a whole. The boards that had Parks and Rec in the open houses uh in those meetings. Had very few red dots, a few red dots, a lot of green dots on there, so it seems like if there's something that we're not gonna argue very much about. That's true, we didn't say it's gonna cost you this. Okay, so uh, back to, so we're on goal seven, complete a comprehensive interconnected recreation trail network as a long-term goal, I'm beginning to say as well. Network period.
Welcome, like twenty fifteen, pretty long term.
Yeah, I don't think we need to say that, I think it's gonna be a given that it will be long. Uh, there is an active transportation um study going on right now, but the Western Weaver area. The West Central Weaver area is part of, and so they'll be looking at the area and coming up with recommendations for other places for. Uh, active transportation facilities and uh, and trail facilities. Um, which will be able to kind of graft into this plan if they get it done before we're done, if not, we'll look at crack it later. So trends that, they're gonna be something uh. Be something we have to look forward to. Doing in the future, uh, and, and that is the O and M. Obviously for trails, right now, the Trail Foundation of Northern Utah, they are the nonprofit entity that is filling the gap that Weaver County is leaving. Weaver County doesn't have that Parks, Recreation and Trail Division, we do have a Park and Leisure Division, those are the very big statewide parks. Not, uh, it's not a uh. System support, uh, set up to support these small uh interconnectivity of trails. Weaver County does have an obligation to operate and maintain the trails once they're installed. Um, and so there's gonna be that, that fiscal cost that'll go along with it unless the park district picks it up and then it'll still be a fiscal cost, or just be paper in a different way. But that doesn't mean that the county has, so we have an obligation to operate and maintain, but it doesn't mean to what standard it needs to be operated and maintained. Does it get plowed in the winter time? Probably not, in fact, out here, it's probably okay to leave it and let it not talk. For a few days later, just so, since someone needs to keep snow for longer than a few days, anyway, anymore. Maybe that'll change at some point in the future. Okay. Any other thoughts on? Some of the stuff under the goal seven?
Just to comment on this map coming up, and I think mostly enough, and I'd add this walk, we'll village to that twenty-five fifty intersection.
Yes.
You've got these red circles, just as a comment for us to double check we get down here.
Yeah, perfect, okay. I appreciate that, yeah, I've gotta go through and make sure I update that on. All of them, okay. There is one thing I think we're missing in the Parks and Rec. And that is how do we deal with? Um, planning for parks in the United Islands.
They have the transportation. Isn't that combined some of the park?
We do. We do, so that talks a little bit about, so the um, the land use, the transportation, uh, so land use and parks map does show a little bit about that. And so I think I'll copy and paste that right back in here again as well, but we don't have a, a document or statement. So we do have, you, you, what you probably are thinking is in the land use section, the land use map, it shows parks kind of cross match.
About, yeah, but there isn't like a, I thought something like recommending that they, you know, you have to.
Park District.
Yeah.
There is something in there.
Where is that?
I'll find it. Okay. You're right, I remember writing it, the question is.
Where is it? It might be in transportation or land use, is it in land use?
It might be in land use.
This is the only exhibit, probably just map, the active transportation and recreation map. We're showing these. Green opportunity areas.
So if you go back to the land use map or you went to Highlands, you'll see kind of what we're talking about, there's some shaded areas in it.
Yeah, and we had that map, but there was a narrative. Not in transportation, but in land use, I'm pretty sure about how the arts and.
I'll make sure they, they go well together.
I like what you have.
Um, one, one thing you'll see is when there's overlap, I'm trying to identify those overlaps. And say, just like we said in that section, we're saying it again, or we're saying it in more detail or something like that. But making sure uh, at the end, this document will something, be something that's interactive, so you'll be able to click on a link, it'll. Take you right back to what that other thing said, uh, and, and back and forth, yeah, that's, that's my intention. I did ask for that uh from our consultants as well, and we'll have a little more eyes on. And so we'll be able to kind of go through and, and make sure. That all the icons are on, I don't know if you're in the role, when we updated the. Housing section of that, I had to go back in and I didn't read, I just re-identified everything because there's a bunch they missed, so. But that's the intention of kind of why I've said, just like we said over here. In a, in a cross-reference kind of way, we can put those icons in and make sure that they link up together. Okay. Utilities and services, hang on a second, well, I'm gonna skip this, just like transportation. Uh, please. We have. Rabbit wells. And, and. Do we have any springs?
Not, I know, but provide. That's kind of what that general was talking about. Copper irrigation, is, there are three companies down here, but copper irrigation company is not one of them, Bon Vista wouldn't take that.
For culinary.
Yes. There, it's a culinary service, but it is, it's depending on service for three individual, okay, I see what you're saying, so. You don't wanna, you don't wanna drink copper irrigation. Okay, perfect, Bon Vista, okay. Water providers, primary, just make sure that's clear, primary culinary. Thanks, oh, that's right, okay, so um, our consultants did put this uh. Template together and they hadn't separated, or they put culinary water in, there was nothing secondary part, so that's why you see the red bullet points on page sixty-nine. Just to make sure that I remember that, I've gotta complete that part. Okay. Any other comments?
We can go more depth later.
When, when it's done? Okay. Chapter eight. Sources. For.
Just the, the supply there for what's.
Okay.
You know, their last requirement were. Different, are, are going to be changed immensely.
I'm looking at an asterisk here. Entity as well. I do have something in here. Um, actually, I think it's in the section you're about to get into in uh, Environment and Resource Management. So there's a lot of, there's a little bit of overlap uh. On water. Between the services and resource management, and I think I'll probably end up throwing a lot of the discussion on water out of resource management. And plugging it into the services um chapter, uh, just so you know, but we'll do a little bit of link up and uh cross-referencing. Okay, I don't know that we um, did we read the vision of uh? Of this chapter last time we were looking at this? I'm just gonna read it to you guys, you guys tell me how you feel about. County desires to protect and plan for the appropriate management of valuable public resources within its jurisdiction. The five core resources identified as having greatest importance are recreation and tourism. Water quality and hydrology, water rights, land use and agriculture, however, these, the county recognizes that many other resources. Of environmental, human and economic. Recognizes that, I think I should say there. That there are. Many other resources of environmental, human and economic significance. And desires the proper management of all, all resources to provide for the betterment of its residents as well as the residents of the state. Any desires for changes there?
Are they trying to use a sustainability mantra and just say it's both current residents but future? Right, and are saying for the residents as well as the residents of the state, but that's current, but it will put sustainability not into the vision, so you just see the future residents.
Current and future. It's in a, in a very conservative community, when you use words like sustainability, people raise an eyebrow. So you learn to, you don't say sustainability, you say, we need to do things for uh people who are here and in the future. The word means sustainable, but somebody's. Turned it to mean something else. Anyway, okay. So, a lot of this is the same, but some of it is different than what we adopted in twenty seventeen. Okay, and I put a lot more robust uh goals. Uh, policies and implementation strategies in this that, that the last version didn't have. Last version hinted at what we should do here, just knowing the community a little bit better than their consultants who put together. Uh, did, I was able to kind of tease some of that information out and, and put that there, so. I think, unless you guys want to go through any of this, these details, I think we can just switch right over to the, the goals. Um, and just make sure we cut through them, the five key or most important resources that was in the bill, in, in the vision. Recreation and tourism, water quality, higher type, sorry, hydrology, water rights, land use and agriculture. We had a stakeholder committee into twenty seventeen um consisting of various people from Western Weaver. And they were the ones who targeted those five key uh resources of importance. It wasn't anything that would just made up what. On the spot, okay. So, you could see what our consultant did, we've got two different areas, obviously uh, in the planning area that we're trying to consider. One is the mountainside area, which is more than just you went to Highlands, being at the Highlands is part of that. And then the other is kind of the lakeside area, or what I've changed to say the west central area, they, they previously had that called lakeside, so if you see lakeside. Uh, call me on it, because I need to change that to west central. Uh, page. Sorry. That, yeah, so uh, what they had defined as lakeside in the planet is in existence right now, I have changed to west central area. No, actually, I, oh, I see what you're saying. South, southeast.
They're on the west side of Western Weaver County, so I think central.
West central, this area over here, the only reason why we're calling it west central is because that's what the general plan that is in existence today calls it.
Oh.
The general plan of today said it calls it west central Weaver County general.
Okay.
Uh, I think we wanted to steer away from Western Weaver or West Weaver, because there's already a community called West Weaver, we didn't want Taylor to go left out. He can spy more, right? West central seemed to be just something that. Existed at some point in time, and then that was our area when we, you went to Highlands and the rest of the mountainside area. So if you look at page seventy six, you can see the map that we're talking about here. Now, this chapter is primarily geared to target public resources. But things like agriculture and in some cases, water are private resources. I say that loosely when I'm talking about water. Um, and so when we're looking at public lands, this is definitely important for the management and operation of public lands. If you guys recall, and some of you may not have been on the planning commission. The reason why the state required all counties, not cities, but counties to create a county resource management plan is because some of the southern Utah. Counties were having a really hard time negotiating their needs with the Bureau of Land Management or the Forest Service, mostly the. And there is, there is policing authority that the federal government has on all that federal land. And so you get into jurisdictional arguments, you get into enforcement issues, and then you get into just general management issues. One of which. For example, is the. The Bundy standoff, the cattle standoff in Nevada, very indicative of some of the southern Utah sentiment towards the federal government and how they're managing. We don't have as much of that issue up here. We've actually got really good partnerships with our federal partners. And some of that might, maybe some of that's because we're mostly working with the Forest Service, but we do have a little bit of deal and that we're dealing with as well. You look at the lake shore, we got a lot of Utah state lands out there and a little bit of the US. Fish and wildlife. Yeah, so it's a, but the US essentially. And then you look at the mountainside and we're looking at Forest Service. Uh, some, but some of that is private. You've got, what is that? Waterfall Canyon, they want private part of mainland, mainland spacing, private, yeah. So. Something to think about. Okay. Uh, looking at page seventy eight, there's your agricultural protection areas. I'll make sure those get. Most of it, most of the contiguous areas, let's just say that gets back on the land use map. Okay. It's a part of the problem with the state trying to take over some of the things that the locals want to manage and govern. Is they make rules that just don't fit with what the locals have already created. For example, you can see all the other efforts that we have in all the other chapters, and then we're back here talking about recreation resources again and water resources again. And so it's, it makes it a little redundant, but we'll get through it. Okay. All right, so page eighty six. Sorry, I was flipping through just to make sure I didn't have it come off to give you guys. Let's start with goal one. In west central area, ensure public lands management and access strategies are in keeping with the community character. And remember, community character is an entire chapter, is chapter two. Goal two, reestablish and maintain the public land survey system. Which I know our surveyor's office would be tickled if we can get all of our survey monuments replaced and documented and.
Change, because I know the goals are written in different fonts, but so you're gonna, you're gonna make it up.
Yeah, yeah, actually, the final document will be a beautiful document that looks something like this. It'll read the same, but it'll look something like this. But yeah, I'm slowly trying to get everything into the same. Form, thank you. It must be after seven. Your brain slowed down. Okay, goal three, in the mountainside area, support the Forest Service and other federal agencies to contain that. To manage forest lands in conjunction with and with cooperation from Weaver County. One of the things that came up as a big ticket issue a couple of years ago, a little bit after we adopted this plan, is roadless rules. Did we talk about roadless rules as a planning commissioner? And you remember, I know we did a lot with Ogden Valley.
I remember we talked about a little bit, but we, it didn't affect.
Okay, so one of the things that the state did is said, counties adopt your take on what your roadless rule is going to be. Basically, roadless means that the Forest Service has adopted a roadless rule that says no new roads can be cut. That even means none of the roads can be cut for forest maintenance purposes. Now, what a lot of the public of Ogden Valley freaked out about was the idea that if they cut a road in, that road's never gonna go. Well, the Forest Service already has a standard that says if we cut a road into a roadless wild area, we're taking the road out. We're only doing it for maintenance and we're taking that with you. But the Forest Service doesn't have the funding to cut roads in and go in and cut down beetle kill, for example, they just, they're not funded to do that. What makes more sense for the foresters to do would be to cut a road in and let the loggers come and log. Cut as much as they can down. It's not cut everything down, it's just cut as much of the dead stuff out, manage it for fire fighting purposes. And then, once that's all out, reclaim the road back to native state. So that's kind of the issue, that those are the facts behind the issue, the public scare behind the issue was, once this road is here, it's never gonna go away. Now all of our wild land is accessible to everyone to tear up there with their ATVs. And it's basically the concern that was up there. So one of our roadless rules, and we probably have it in here, is that we will continue to work with the Forest Service to do healthy forest management. Strategies and that may include a road every once in a while, but it has to be fully reclaimed when that management strategy is executed. After execution. Okay. One, two, three, there we are. Okay, agriculture, livestock grazing, irrigation and predator control. So they'll just push all those subjects together. Uh, okay, goal four, goal four, support and protect continued agricultural operations. A lot of what this does is just kind of. It, it tips our hat back to the land use action items that talk about, maybe we do T R's, maybe we emphasize the cultural protection areas. As areas that long-term ag operations should continue on. So you can see in, in. Actually, four point one, three, we say in tandem with land use action item, go back and read which one it is, encourage the creation of a T R. That's kind of how we're working. Okay. Mining mineral resources and energy resources. Okay, goal five. Support the continuation of mining operations in the county in a manner that minimizes adverse impacts and preserves character of the planning area. This goal is also a goal chapter three land use by reference. So if you actually go back to that one, which we read just a few minutes ago. It just bounces you right over to the section here. And if you'll remember on mining, we pulled the land use up again. So the aggregate rock that is at on the county line. We did talk about just taking that whole triangle and just recommending that it go to gravel until that has been mined out. And then at some point in time, the city will take it and they'll choose what they're gonna do within the future. So that is listed, let's see, scroll up to the top of that. There you go, right up in the corner, barely, barely in the view window. Yep. Um, as far as other mining goes. What we have, well, actually, we have a little bit down at the mouth of Weaver Canyon. Um, and I was surprised to see that we actually had that one, but we have that. It is, it is, it's a little island and it's a current zone, the sea freeze zone, it's the only sea freeze zone that we have.
It's one that's active.
Or it's, it's, uh, it's, yeah, right at the mouth of the canyon. Well, they might have mined. Was that? Yeah, the hole. They might have mined out as much as they possibly can. Just upon that. That, that's what it is. And they're on both, they're on both sides of the road.
But that side of, because that's in our Geneva splits the county line on the side that's. Not being mined in that purple is Geneva, their main.
On the. Southern river, yeah.
But that's a new county.
It's actually really interesting to see because you've got this river at this level and both sides, these holes that don't have hardly any water. Makes sense. I wondered where all the pollution was coming from. Okay. The other mining resources out of this is the Great Salt Lake. And that's a significant mining resource for the entire state. So the state made sure that I was aware of that as we were putting this together recently. So I made sure we, we have stuff in there for. Those resources.
We have one in. Like north right there, but they do also.
Yeah, that was. Yeah, one of them. Yep, but yeah, that would be gravel. Until the city accesses. Okay. Goal six, support the development of renewable energy resources. So here's something that I've added in. Newer, wasn't in the previous version, so. Principal six point one, provide opportunities for the creation of renewable energy resources, solar, wind power, geothermal energy. Provide appropriate aesthetic mitigation or screening to protect the property values of neighboring owners. And then six point one point one, amend zoning ordinances to identify properties where appropriate solar overlays zones can be applied. Amend the solar overlay zone for consistency and predictability as it's applied. So what my thought is there, now that we've kind of gone through the rigmarole of the title and soul project. Unfortunately, didn't come through issue, but be great if it did. I can see kind of the beginning to end for solar, and I think we can take it out of the Marlboro Zone in general. And just make it a permitted use in certain zones, whatever, identify what those zones are. Um, and so at some point in time, I'm suggesting we come back and not make it a legislative process to create solar farm, just a solar farm. I think a wind energy farm is totally different story than those are visually impactful. Yeah. Well, so people ask what's gonna happen with the lake when everything dries up. If there's no water for birds, then you don't have to protect birds anymore. Seems like a great spot to do some wind generation, but I didn't write that down here because I don't know that it's something we should look forward to. We'll, we'll keep that in the back. Well, and yeah, maybe what we should say is if the governor is not successful. Okay, wildfire management, not just weeds, so goal seven. Provide effective wildfire management. It's a pretty simple goal, but very worthy to go after. Okay. Goal eight, manage the spread of noxious and invasive vegetation. And we're already tackling that as best we can in the county. We've got a goal or a weed board and a weed department, and so we're doing what we can. So we'll just want to continue to work with all the federal agencies to make sure they're giving what they can do. I, one of the things that I really. Not that it tickles me, I just, it's kind of ironic, when you drive through some of those still open farms in North Park. The amount of dire's boat that is in that area is alarming, and I don't know why or how they're not doing anything about that, those areas, but.
We did plant roundup ready. We can't spray it out. It has no screen management.
Right? Yeah, it has, and it's no wonder to me that the hillside, you continue to have to pull them off the mountainside in the unencorpedated area. And just the whole seed's just gonna fly right up that mountainside when the winds. There's something a little ironic, I think county gets a little bit of stuff left for having a lot of weeds, but we're going to these cities and. It's all better. Okay, water resources. Goal number nine. Protect water rights and the ability to access, to access authorized points of diversion and water conveyance works. Now, our original plan. I think it said protect. Um, I was a little, maybe, maybe the word is protect, protect, I'm a little concerned about using that. I think definitely promote access. I don't want the community to think that the county has any authority or private accesses to private water resources. And so when we say protect. That kind of makes me think we should be adopting rules or laws or whatever, and I don't want to get in the. Preserve, I think is a great, actually, that's a great word to use, or support and preserve. I like that. I know, I know what our consultant was thinking when they use the word protect. Just to, anyone think we're stepping on their private property rights? Okay, goal ten. Nice and easy one, keep surface water and groundwater clean. Should we say keep or? Ryan, make it. Work towards keeping it clean. Okay, goal eleven, strive for water wise best practices to protect water supplies as the community grows. Uh, a lot of water stuff in here, and this is where I think I'll probably pull it out, stick it over into the public services section. Goal twelve, protect the Great Salt Lake and its resources. Ironically. That was not in our resource management plan. We're one of the only counties that has lake shore. And we didn't have anything in our resource management plan that said we need to protect the lake. So I just put in something very simple, work cooperatively with the state of Utah to find opportunities to protect and restore the shrinking Great Salt Lake. What I think. What's that? Oh, thank you. So, it's not, you guys count? Well, oh, and then thirteen, got it. Thank you.
Good. How are we gonna do that?
Uh, well, I'm gonna give you again, my, I think I told you guys this last time, maybe my prediction. I don't think we're ever gonna get the lake back to its levels unless we stop using water that's here. Which means we have to find water somewhere else and bring it here. Uh, we've built oil pipelines that are longer than we need to go to get water. And so it's possible and feasible to build a water pipeline. It's just how to do it, where to go to get it, who to work with to get it. That sort of thing. And I think the sooner we do it, the better. It's really gonna be a statewide thing. I don't see Weaver County doing anything like that. Um, maybe Weaver Basin at some point in time will look to do that, but. You know, build something to the Mississippi, I'm sure, it can siphon off the top of. It might.
It's likely a small price to pay for your heck. That's a problem. It goes for I. It's not, it'll be very difficult here.
No.
If you look at all of this, three of these lakes throughout the world. And it's, actually, it's quite frightening when you think about it.
You're gonna have to AstroTurf the whole thing in order to keep the heavy. That's probably true. There's a, there's a misunderstanding that I've seen and heard from a lot of folks that just believe that we're wasting water if we're just gonna go to the lake. Because it's a dead lake, right? Uh, it's a big misunderstanding, and the more water we have in that lake, the better, well, not more, because up to a certain, it's all right. And then stop. But, yeah, keeping it wet is important, so.
It's a good statement.
Good, I, I think so too, as long as you guys are comfortable, we'll, we'll keep it in there. Okay, well, goal. Next, second, second, second twelve. Goal second book is protect river corridors and riparian areas. Goal thirteen, support and promote the recreational and lifestyle opportunities of living in proximity to public lands. And then goal fourteen, support and promote the gold policies and action items of the parks and recreation chapter. Fifteen, support the healthy management of wildlife and wildlife resources. Seventeen, on page ninety two. Oh, ninety two, who wrote this? Oh, thank you. Protect sensitive lands. That is as simple of a goal as we can possibly put in.
With sensitive lands to find.
Yeah, but we do get into a little bit more detail, so let me just read to you guys what this says. So principle sixteen point one, provide support, protection of sensitive lands to the betterment of a clean and healthy environment. And sixteen point one point one, actually, so that's an action item. Encourage and support the Corps of Engineers and other local government agencies to conduct a wetland elimination study, which could be combined with a sensitive area management plan. Uh, this came out of our original document and shoreline plan. The. The.
I thought the state just did that.
The uh extensive area management plan.
They changed all of our.
Oh, okay, you're talking about the Phoenix study.
Yeah.
It's publicly available, you could see it, but.
But it's not in that.
It's not technically enacted yet. Um but I don't think that is the only sensitive area management plan. So I think what our consultants when they wrote this back in twenty seventeen was looking at. Is a more holistic approach to any sensitive area, riparian corridors, flood plains, wetlands, et cetera. And coming up with a uh what they're calling a SAM, which they would use an acronym like that if it was a type of plan that's being used in other jurisdictions as well. And so I can look into that and figure out exactly what we mean by that. I left this in here because it was in the original document. Um and just wanted to piggyback on whether or not this is. Thumbs up, thumbs down? Thumbs all around?
It sounds like those plans are not county initiated plans.
No, it would be that. Yeah, so this action item would be that we would uh be involved and supportive, yeah. Yep.
Which is what you say there.
Okay, perfect. Good, I like it. And then sixteen point one point two, a sense of land, as sense of lands are identified and determined to be inappropriate for development. The land should be zoned as open space.
You're saying determined to be inappropriate for development. It's not infeasible for development, but it's inappropriate. So what is the guidelines of what is?
That comes down to uh. Yep, planning commission and county commission discussion, ultimate legislative authority. So when you zone something, oh one, oh one is a very tricky zone. Because you can't get any closer to a constitutional or excuse me, regulatory takings than applying the oh one zone. Now, in the oh one zone, there are still things that you can do to realize a monetary benefit of your land. Golf courses, private parks. Cemeteries, stuff like that, right? But it's very limited. And if you can prove in court that if the county applying oh one to your land without your consent. Uh if you volunteer into it, it's a different story. If you prove in court that the county applied it to your property. And it took their reasonable value from your land, it zeroed out your land essentially, then the county would have to pay for. Essentially, that is a taking. The county's argument would be they could still do a golf course. Or something like that.
I think it would be pretty easy to build.
I think so. So really, when we're looking at doing this, I think we're working with landowners. Who have identified that they're probably not going to develop in these particular areas, because they understand that's sensitive as well. This kind of gets into the kind of that weird area, right? Because you might have had wetlands at one point in a particular area, but when someone started farming it, they drank it. Uh or you might have wetlands in a particular area because someone started farming it and that's where the tailwaters. Um and so there's been a lot of back and forth with the Army Corps over how to. Yeah, manmade or not.
DWR backs it up all over out there and they've created wetlands everywhere that it hasn't.
Right?
Okay, probably some areas and some they're not, yeah.
Uh I, it's not uncommon at the water cooler, not on the public record and not naming anyone in specific to hear someone say. Well, you know, we'll just pull the plug on that thing, get all the water out of there. Maybe they won't do it. Uh as opposed to go through the federal process, because going through the federal processes. One of the things I'm looking at targeting with this particular statement is. There's a lot of delineated wetland out west that we don't know for sure. It's on the Army Corps map that we don't know for sure. Uh the county has already gone through the process on some of that wetland to have it removed from their map because it isn't a true wetland. Um we, I've got a developer with a large amount of property out there that wants to develop. Um saying most of this does not exist and we'll give you the science to back. Um and so they have to go through a process to get that removed from the map as well. Mr. Marriott has a ton of property, a lot of it is marked as wetland. But he is proposing to do, and this is just my idea right now, is to take a big section of his land and create a wetland bank. So and um right now, there's a wetland bank in Box Elder County that some, I don't know if all, I don't know how applicable it is anymore. But I know some land in Weaver County has been mitigated. A lot of wetland in Weaver County in exchange for a one to five acreage ratio. And so for every acre they pulled out here, they had to create five acres or pay to create five acres of wetland in the uh the bird refuge in Box.
We might have kept the money here.
And so that's kind of, I think that's Mr. Marriott's idea. Is there a lot of landowners that are gonna be in the same boat? Um who need to pull the drain, pull the plug on the drain. Um and so he'll provide the land essentially to mitigate. That means that property owners will pay him to make sure that he creates enough wetland. Actually, I think you probably make a little bit of money on not using part of his land and doing that. So smart. Smart thought process. Um and it's shown, you want to show the future of land use map? It's shown on the map. So that's this. He's already got quite a bit of wetness in there and so. Enhancing that, providing more pond area or whatever he needs to do. And there's some hunting opportunities up in there and yeah, so.
Well, you know, over the years, when that Weaver River flooded, flooded first crit, second crit, third crit. Little Weaver. And because. Out through there, there's four. Cricks out. Channels, channels, sure. And uh over the years, especially after fifty two. Eighty three and McCord and they were usually big. And of course, now we got the uh famous uh cement waterway through more and now. But a lot of those areas may really not be true wetlands that.
Right, and that's, that's gonna be the challenge in identifying as that. As development comes down the road, is the wetland, is it not? Do we need a pot of bank for them to do? So uh I think we should just continue to support Randy and his idea of doing that. And maybe I can give with you the, I haven't found a map that shows those specific creeks. I'd like to make a map of now. I know what, what Randy's been trying to do is kind of help the waterway channel the water a little bit better. Uh because even with our cement waterway, when we open that up, that just sends water straight after him and he doesn't have anywhere for it to go very easily. And so in creating wetlands, he's essentially also helping channel it um into more appropriate locations. So not all of his property gets flooded out there, but not a lot of his property is flooded. Okay. Uh socioeconomic resources. So we don't have a ton of uh paleontological resources. There. That we know. Now, we do have a map. So, so number one, we're not allowed to disclose where they're located, even if we. Okay, we have, the state has a map that identifies land by hexagons. And if there is a paleontological resource within that hexagon, that hexagon is flagged, but that's a lot of area within the hexagon. So kind of somewhere in this area, there's a resource that we're not gonna tell you where it is. So um we do have some of them located in the western Weaver area, not a ton. Okay, the goal is protect and celebrate the cultural and historical roots of the planning area. And that ties us right back to community character, which is what we say in the community character. Okay, law enforcement, protect people, property and resources. Pretty simple. Um and what we're saying in there, essentially, this is one that I don't think we had goals or objectives out of the original plan. So we're saying cooperate, coordinate, county law enforcement resources with state federal land. Uh sorry, federal law enforcement resources, action item, Weaver County will continue to support effective coordination and cooperation among federal, state and local law enforcement. Reason why this one is important, um and the reason why county resource management plans are important when we're dealing with the forests. Is the Forest Service has a rule that says Forest Service, when you're creating your resource management plan, because all of them have to have a resource management plan. Uh you have to cooperate and coordinate with the local entities. And that has been further refined through, I believe it's case law and might be statutory obligation apparently. To mean that they've got to meet with us, they got to see what we have in our plans, and they've got to do what they can to defer to our plans. If it's possible or not, not against what their um objectives are, basically. So if we have in here, for example, the roadless rule. Uh we have in here that we are going to support you to create roads only for these reasons. Then when they do their resource management plan, they'll meet with us, we'll provide them this information, this context, and they'll say, okay. Well, you've asked for it, that's what we're gonna do. Right now, the Forest Service rule is no roads, even if that means we have to make all of our guys in there. So doesn't make a lot of sense for that to be a thing. Okay. Economic consideration, I just put a goal in here. Uh I don't know, we need to go into a lot of detail. Continue to support agriculture, mining tourism and recreation as important components of the Kansas economy. Any thoughts? Want more detail? Sounds like we've hit the end. And speaking of hitting the end, goal twenty, which I think is one of the. We've got one more goal after goal ten. Um goal twenty on the bottom ninety two, reduce pollution and emissions by incrementally adjusting how the population uses land. And we're tying that back to some of the smart growth principles. Maybe we can get higher efficiency homes. Maybe we can locate people closer to where they live, work in place, but not. No, I will, that's a good idea.
There's also, as I'm kind of thinking about economic considerations. We may want to talk about the industrial area.
So primarily, this is economic considerations as it relates to um public resources. Um but you can see that it does have some crossover in a few areas. I will review it with Sarah. Sarah, without the H. Guys ready to go to the very last chapter of the plan? Button up with the nest little bow. You can press that LBI in parentheses, forgot to reset. Weaver County Islands, close quote.
The very tough look at state code.
Oh, that's actually, doesn't exist anymore, because I deleted it. So what we have, sorry, what these guys are looking at is, let's just go. We go right into the vision, which is unincorporated islands throughout Weaver County, should be annexed into adjacent city, into unadjacent city for more equitable provision of municipal services. Simple.
Think your goal fits well with it.
Uh so goal, yeah, limit all unincorporated islands, prevent the creation of new ones. Period. Now, one of the things you'll see in here that, for example, applies to. Before I scare everybody. You into the, you into Highlands area. There is one that says incorporate for you to Highlands, and I think that was probably over in the land use section. I'll check on that. Maybe plug it back in here. One of the reasons why you went to Highlands isn't necessarily part of this section, because it's not an island. And that is why I tried to, okay, that's what it is. It's a, actually, I'm one point, one point six. Work with state legislators to amend the unincorporated islands and peninsula code to include an island to. Sorry, that's worded weird. To basically include that the definition of an island. That definition of an island is also something that is bounded on, on one side by a different unincorporated county. Or by an area served by a different planning area, general plan within the same county. So what that means, right now, state code says it's only an unincorporated island. If it's surrounded on all sides by municipality. So we've got these little spots on the north side of uh. Western Weaver area, right up on four thousand north, where the cities go all the way around it, except for north of four thousand. And that's unincorporated Box Elder County. Technically, that's not an island, even though it is completely surrounded by non-unincorporated Weaver County area. Um and uh above and beyond this, we're looking at, all right, in the U N to Highlands. If that whole mountainside area is peninsula or an island, or if we can call it that, because the upper valley is controlled by a different plan. Then we can work with the folks of the Highlands or anyone who's in the mountainside area to try and get them to annex or incorporate. Yeah, wait, a lot in North Ogden. Now, we've already gone through the state cross, statutory process to recommend that North Ogden. Absolve for uh.
Do it without a vote, because no one's going to vote to want to leave.
There is, and that's why this. Well, and that's, that's not too far from the future, I think. Uh Jenkins lives in the city, doesn't he? But yeah, the other two, not so much. But that's why this is important, is because we're saying anything that, well, basically, isn't the west central area should probably incorporate. Um or annex into an incorporated area, um including possibly being islands. I just wanted to make sure that. You were okay with that, Sarah, being our only representative from that area.
I mean, we'd have to vote to do it, but it.
So not necessarily, if this changes to define an island as something separate, it wouldn't go to a public vote. What the process for that, as I actually talked about that, the process for that is that the county commission creates some kind of a resolution. Recommending to the jurisdiction that what is an island, if it's defined as an island, gets annexed into that city. So we have to have a public hearing, uh we have to notify every landlord within that island. Um and there's a timeframe as well for public discourse to happen. Once that's all done, county commission makes up their mind, they send that resolution, they sign the resolution, they send it to the city. At that point, the city can annex that island in without any, without taking protest at all, without considering any public input.
But if it's not here, then they can't do that?
If it's, if the state code doesn't change to redefine what an unincorporated island is, then no, they can't do that. So.
Doesn't matter what we put in here, like what will happen and what will happen.
Um if, if we say, for example, if we have an action item that says we need to go get with legislators to change the state code. To redefine what an island is, so we can get rid of some of these islands. What we, what we know are islands, because county doesn't provide for any other sides of them. Then we could do this, and that's what this is recommending.
But the hard part is where Weaver County is on the other side of you and the Highlands.
On the other side of the mountain, yes, yes. Maybe uh when the Ogden Valley incorporates. They have to build a tunnel through the mountain. Okay, that's it. You guys see on the last page, page three or part three, it's just a list of things that are.
Let's just go on and mark and annex cool places.
You mean like anywhere, any cool place? I like that. Little bit of Paris. I like that, yeah. Okay. So next time when we meet, uh let's see, we go back to the website, let's look at dates. So we, we do. I did get a time for the planning, for the county commission meeting, that's again, before then. I think we do.
We do?
I think we, I think we have a county commission joint work session.
It's a work session.
Quit, which?
July eleventh.
Before, before June thirteen.
I don't have an invite, if it's been sent out, it's being just tentative.
Just barely sent up. Yep, there it is. Okay, how does the eighteenth from four to six look for you guys? Negative? Not good. Any other takers? Think we can get a corn? Let you get comfortable, eighteen. Rick, are you okay with that? Okay. From four to six. Well, we can go longer like we did last time, and I think we probably should, if we've got more discussion. And the commissioners will be here from four to six. No guarantee that they stay long enough. That's, that's gonna be the fifteen percent raise, or the twelve percent. Instead of candy bars. So my goal is to have a complete transportation section and a complete public services section for you guys better. We could schedule things in December. That sounds great. I'm on board.